February twenty, twenty twenty two to order. Jenny, would you call the roll?
Mr. Adi. Is he present with us? Via Zoom?
Has Mr. Adi joined us?
No.
No.
They're shaking their head.
This is Casper, here. This is Bodhi.
Here.
This is Schaefer.
Here.
This is O'Connor.
Here.
I'll take a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of consideration of employment and compensation of a public employee. So moved. Thank you Julie.
Second.
Thank you Kelly. I have a motion in a second. Would you call the roll?
This is Schaefer.
Yes.
This is Casper.
Yes.
This is Bodhi.
Yes.
This is O'Connor.
Yes. So please sit tight and we'll be back.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good.
However, I cannot turn on my camera because it says the host has blocked me.
Oh, you want to see, you want camera on?
I don't need, well, I'm gonna need to put my presentation on the screen. So that can, if that can be accomplished without my camera, that's fine. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, just go on in a minute. I'll put my camera on.
Okay.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
I'm still here, but it's still telling me that my host has blocked me from turning on my camera.
Okay, hold on. They said, he said the host has disabled me. Am I good now?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
It says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
So where are you? Can you see me now?
I can see you perfectly, Isaac.
Okay.
There you go. Isaac, can, am I projecting into the room now?
I can see you.
Good.
Yeah. They don't need to see me, right?
I don't know. You're asking the wrong person.
Thank you. Let's give our technology team a round of applause. They work very hard for us.
At the end.
All right, I am going to bring us back out of executive session. The board met earlier in executive session for the purpose of considering the employment compensation of a public employee. Welcome to everyone that's here tonight. We're happy to have you. Mrs. Schaefer, would you lead us in Pledge of Legions?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to item three on the agenda. Approval of the agenda. I'll take a motion. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. I'll take a second.
Isaac on.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. If we could move our microphones forward just a bit so we're picked up on the tape and our audience can hear us. Thank you.
Mrs. Logan? Mr. Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
And Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. Before we begin tonight, we have got a lot to cover in our agenda, but I did want to make a brief statement. I've been reflecting a lot on the last few board meetings, and I think that as the board president and as a veteran board member, it's important to lead by example. In order to do that, I think we need to acknowledge that as board members and as elected officials, we come to these seats from a place of mutual respect and honor if we're to function as a strong and productive team. At the last board meeting, there were comments that were expressed in the heat of discussion that were viewed as derogatory toward the superintendent Matt Miller. And I wanted to take this opportunity to express my support for Matt and for his work as superintendent. He's served the Lakota community for five years. He's led the administration during very difficult times. But despite these challenges, Matt has acted with dedication and integrity. And he's helped lead Lakota to being one of the premier school districts in the state. I also wish to extend my support, my gratitude to Mrs. Logan, our treasurer, whose excellent service has helped to ensure that the district is financially sound and that our community's tax dollars are used as effectively and as efficiently as possible. I've watched both Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan act professionally and cordially toward all members of the board through an in-depth onboarding process, and I have an expectation that we would all treat them in the same manner. As we emerge from a global pandemic, this is doubtlessly a challenging time for our community and for the nation as a whole. As a board member, I fully intend to support the policies and perform my duties faithfully toward the needs and desires of our community as I have for 14 years. I recognize there will be differences of opinion and approach, and that we as board members and leaders of the school district will have disagreements. Passionate and spirited debate is expected and it's appropriate. But derogatory statements and personal attacks directed at our administration or other board members aren't productive, and they don't help us to achieve our community's goals. I strongly encourage my fellow board members to join me in holding ourselves to a standard of mutual respect. The board has not met since that meeting, and so there was no opportunity to develop a joint board statement. So I would like to offer that opportunity to my fellow board members.
I I would agree that it appears that lately the administration has been under attack and what you do every day is beyond what we expect. You work long hours. You work on the weekends and you're always available. So I would also like to see moving forward that we do treat not only each other with respect, but we keep our personal comments against the administrators and out of the, out of the board meetings. There's nowhere for them to belong. We are gonna disagree as a board. We're not always gonna agree on everything, but when we take our oath, something in our oath that we say is that we will support the will of the board even when we don't agree. And I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward and as we take votes on issues and as we take votes on policies, everything isn't always gonna go your way, but you're here to represent everybody in the community on the board. And once we take a vote and once a decision is made, then we need to support it as a board. And again, I also thank you for your tireless service.
That's all. Your turn. Again, I think back to the time when Mrs. Logan and Mr. Miller each came into their positions and what a positive impact they have both had on the district in their tenure here. I look forward to, while, while they've had many positive performance reviews up to this point, I am confident that that will continue going forward. And I'm thankful for all you've brought to the students and the excellence of Lakota and look forward to supporting you in that effort. I take my role in governance seriously and look forward to continuing to provide that high-level government governance input that is appropriate for the board to model.
Okay, this is Isaac.
Isaac's.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. B.
Okay. I also agree with dude Mrs. Lo, Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. O'Connell, and Mrs. Kelly. I think we need as board members to be professional and to keep personal issues out of the board. Our goal should be the entire students, the 17,000 or more students that we have, the administration, the staff, and everybody. We should be respectful, and even if we disagree, we should disagree with respect. I have met with Ms. Miller, Mr. Miller, and Ms. Logan. I've worked with you guys. I know we are not gonna agree, but I still wanna give you my word that we are gonna disagree to agree. And we have to do it with respect because this is a board. This is a school district. This has to do with the entire students and the parents and the entire community. So we have to put our personal issues aside and look at the big goal, which is the students and the entire staff and the community. So thank you so much for what you do, and I'm gonna, we're gonna, I promise I'm gonna work with you all and to make sure that we succeed.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Mrs. Bodie. It is my responsibility to ask questions, and I will continue to do so. And I will do my job to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, board. We'll move on to number five on the agenda. That's the review of the community survey results board. That would be the packet that you have in front of you with Paul Fallon.
Just real quick, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you for that. This is obviously not my comfort zone.
Yeah.
Do this especially unannounced. But thanks. And as, as those of you that have known me the longest, I think you know my priorities have been and will continue to be our kids, our teacher staff, our community, and, and the five of you. So I have said I am blessed to be here, and I know that every single morning when I wake up, and we just try to do the best that we can for our kids collectively. And so, um, thank you. I just appreciate that. But again, not my comfort zone right now.
Yeah, and I would echo that. It's, it's never comfortable to, yeah, especially when we were not expecting it. So again, thank you for the support. And again, we'll just keep on keeping on and doing what we're here to do. So thank you.
You're very welcome. We'll move on to the community survey results.
Paul, can you hear me okay?
I can indeed. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Paul. That's your warm-up act for the evening. Mr. Fallon, just as a reminder, did a survey for our community back, it was 2016, I believe. Is that right, Paul, or 2017?
That was the most recent previous one.
Yep, and he gives us a glimpse into our district, into our community in terms of finances, culture, all things Lakota, sort of from a higher view and drills down, but I'm not gonna steal his thunder. I'm gonna let him talk about it a little bit more. This will help us with our strategic plan that we need to update. Also gives us some insight into some pieces of the master facilities plan. There's a finance component, but Paul, I'm gonna tee it up that way and let you take it from there.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here once again. Let me start first and foremost by talking briefly about the methods. This data was gathered through a combination of secure SMS text web surveys and telephone interviews performed by specially trained opinion research interviewers. That is, they weren't telemarketers who are trained to elicit affirmative responses. They were data gathers trained to elicit truthful ones. Conducted with 400 randomly selected adult residents, the Lakota local school district. And for 400 interviews, the estimated overall margin of sampling error is plus minus 4.9% or 5% with rounding as a result of the use of random sampling in order to gather the data. It just means if we asked, for example, what is your favorite topping on a pizza? If 50% of the respondents said pepperoni because of sampling variability, that figure could be as low as 45% to as high as 55%. The interviews were conducted during the period of December 6th through December 13th. So it's, it's been almost three months ago, and we are in the midst of what I would characterize as a dynamic opinion environment. So it's important to keep in mind that a survey is a snapshot of the opinions in time. It's static. It's not dynamic. So things may very well have changed. Let me mention briefly that the data was stratified and weighted, so the differences in violent characteristics are all represented in proportion to their percentages of the district's adult population. And the reason we do that is to prevent under or over sampling of any key groups from distorting the results. And I should mention that due to rounding, not all the results will add up to 100%. And the data is presented in slightly different order than the questions were asked in order to create some subject-specific modules that make this a little bit easier to present. First, let's look at the opinion environment. One of the first questions we started with on the survey is thinking about the Lakota local school district that serves your community. This time, would you say it's generally going in the right direction or has it gotten off onto the wrong track? Now, before I talk about the results, let me talk briefly about the purpose for this question. It's not really of any great probative value to you as an institution. Really, the reason that survey researchers start surveys with questions like this is because they're easy to answer, and they can bolster the respondent's confidence in his or her ability to participate. And we know if we get respondents past about the second or third question, they'll usually finish the survey. Nevertheless, it does give you some idea of the social barometer of the community. That is how restless or how disenchanted people are. At the time of the survey, 55% of the respondents said the district was moving in the right direction. 24% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. You can see from the vertical bar chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 2% volunteered mixed opinions and 19% were unsure. Now ideally, you want the right direction figure to be at or above 60%, and the wrong track figure to be at or below 20%, and you're pretty close, which is pretty good news. Now, looking at the horizontal bar chart on the right-hand side of the screen to review some of the subgroup results. Among parents, 63% said the school district was going in the right direction. And when I refer to parents, I'm talking about people who at the time of the survey had a child enrolled in the district. Among non-parents, 49% said the district was moving in the right direction. So it was below the 50% threshold, but still not bad. There was also a higher percentage of respondents who were unsure. When I refer to non-parents, talking about people who did not have children enrolled in the district at the time the survey was conducted, although they may have had children, for example, who are not of school age yet. Among private school parents referred to as PS parents, 39% said the district was moving in the right direction, and 34% said it had gotten off onto the wrong track. There were no statistically significant differences when I compared white respondents at 57% with respondents of other races at 54%. And the latter group was a consolidation of all the other categories for those respondents who indicated their race or ethnicity was something other than white. And the reason for that is consolidating them allowed to have a large enough sub-sample for a significance testing. There were no statistically significant differences by gender, and we, when we asked this same question in 2016, 62% said the district was moving in the right direction. So it's gone down a little bit over time, although some of that difference may be attributable sampling variability. We also asked in a forced choice battery, what would you say should be the top priority for school district leaders to work on during the next few years? Respondents were presented with response options and then asked to choose. And as you can see, at 45%, the top most frequently chosen response was improving the quality of education. And I don't want you to jump to any conclusions just yet. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But before we do, let me mention that at the second plateau was staying in the budget, staying within the budget, pardon me, at 13%. Another 13% chose hiring more teaching staff, and 12% chose reducing class sizes. On the third plateau, 5% chose supporting students with disabilities, and 4% chose raising test scores. Now, looking more closely at the subgroup results, as I said, overall, 45% chose improving the quality of education. But as you can see from the call-out box, it was 49% with 18 to 44-year-olds, 54% among respondents of other races, 48% among non-parents, 51% among private school parents, 49% among men, and 33% among those respondents who were not registered to vote. Looking at staying within the budget, it was 13% overall, but as you can see from the call-out boxes, it was 19% among respondents 65 and older, 19% for respondents who've lived in the district more than 20 years, and 23% for those respondents not registered to vote. 13% overall chose hiring more teaching staff, and that was 15% with those respondents who've lived in the district less than 10 years. And lastly, reducing class sizes with 12% overall, but it was 17% with 18 to 44-year-olds, 15% with respondents who've lived in the district 10 to 20 years, and 20% among women. We also asked, generally speaking, how much would you say that the education provided by the Lakota local school district has contributed to the quality of life that is enjoyed by people who live in the community? As you can see by looking at the horizontal bar chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 43% say contribute, it has contributed a lot, 42% somewhat, 7% said not much, just 2% said not at all, and 7% were unsure. Looking more closely at those respondents who said a lot, and public opinion researchers tend to emphasize those strong sentiments because we know that from past experience, the more strongly people feel about something, the less likely they are to change their minds about it, and more likely they are to act on that sentiment. So looking more closely at those people who've said a lot by viewing the horizontal bar chart on the right-hand side of the screen, as you can see, there were no statistically significant differences based on parentage or race. Among respondents who've lived in the district less than 10 years, it was 39%. Among those who've lived in the district 10 to 20 years, it's 41%. And impressively, among those who've lived in the district more than 20 years, who presumably have the most experience with the district and have had the most opportunity for observation, 50% said it has contributed a lot to the quality of life. When we asked the same question in 2016, 50% overall said the district had contributed a lot to the quality of life compared to 43% now. So that was another change we observed. We did something a little different here. Typically, I don't normally test these kinds of phrases and credos, but someone suggested that we do it. I thought it was an interesting idea. So the question we constructed is, as you may or may not know, the district strives to be personalized, future-ready, fiscally responsible, and in this together with the community. You agree or disagree that these goals describe the Lakota local school district? As you can see from the pie chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 67% agree. That's more than two-thirds of the respondents. Just 14% disagree and 19% were unsure. Even more impressively, when you look at the horizontal bar chart for the subgroup results at the right-hand side of the screen, none of those differences were statistically significant. It just means there was an unacceptably high probability that any of the differences observed between groups such as parents and non-parents, for example, are most likely the result of sampling variability or chance. More importantly, what it says to me is that this sentiment was consistent across the board, which is even more remarkable given the robust agreement with it. We also asked some questions regarding communication. For example, as you can see on the left-hand side of the screen, we asked, how would you rate the job the Lakota Local School District does communicating with parents in the public? 66% said excellent or good, which is derived by taking the 26% excellent and adding to it the 40% good. 19% said fair, 8% said poor, very poor, which is derived by taking the 6% poor and adding to it the 2% very poor and 7% were unsure. Now, as you can see from the call-out box, 80% of parents rated the district's performance in this area as excellent or good, which is remarkable in this day and age because of the difficulty that you encounter communicating with people in the era of fragmentation. And even 54% of non-parents shared that sentiment. When we asked the same question in 2016, 65% rated the performance of the district in this area as excellent or good, almost an identical result. Looking at the right-hand side of the screen, another forced choice battery asked respondents, how would you prefer to get most of your information about the school district in the future? As you can see, 46% chose emails they received from the schools. It was head and shoulders over anything else. It was also chosen by 75% of parents compared to just 18% of non-parents. Second was materials you receive in the mail, at 20% overall. That was chosen by 7% of parents and 33% of non-parents. Third was through social media such as Facebook or Twitter. And on the second, pardon me, on the third plateau, 9% was visiting the school district's website. 5% chose reading the newspaper, 2% chose automated phone calls and 2% chose videos on the internet. Indicating to me that, as you can see, there is a bifurcated sentiment about how information should be received, which is going to place a bit of a logistical burden on the district as there's no single way that people in the community are going to want to get their information and it's going to require a multifaceted approach to reach everyone. Now, turning to finances. One of the questions we asked is, in your opinion, how would you rate the job the Lakota Local School District is doing managing its budget and tax dollars? As you can see from the vertical bar chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 54% said excellent or good, which is good news. For this particular measure, you want to be at or above the 50% threshold. 15% of the respondents chose excellent and 39% chose good. Another 23% said fair, 7% said poor or very poor, which is derived by taking the 5% poor and adding to it the 2% very poor and 16% were unsure. Looking more closely at those respondents who said excellent or good by viewing the horizontal bar chart on the right-hand side of the screen, once again, there was no statistically significant differences between parents and non-parents. Among men, 49% rated the job of the district as excellent or good, almost at 50% threshold. And 58% of women chose excellent or good. 55% of 18 to 44-year-olds chose excellent or good compared to 45%, 49% of 45 to 64-year-olds and 60% of respondents 60 and older. 54% of voters chose excellent or good, which was not statistically significant when compared with those respondents who were not registered to vote. And when we asked the same question in 2016, 50% said excellent or good. So we've actually gone up a little bit in this area, although again, that might also be attributable sampling variability. But the results here were very reassuring. We also asked, would you say that you receive a good value from the Lakota Local School District, schools for the money you pay in taxes? As you can see from the pie chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 64% agreed, saying yes. 20%, 22% dissented, saying no, and 14% were unsure. Looking more closely at those respondents who said, yes, it was a good value by viewing the horizontal bar chart on the right-hand side of the screen, 73% of parents said they were getting a good value. But even 56% of non-parents said so as well. Were no statistically significant differences by gender. Among 18 to 44-year-olds, a whopping 70% said, yes, they're getting a good value compared to 59% of 45 to 64-year-olds and 61% of respondents 65 and older. 66% of voters said they're getting a good value compared to 50% of those respondents who are not registered to vote. I think the most important thing to point out here, however, is that it's above the 50%, at or above the 50% threshold for every one of the key major subgroups tested in the survey, which is also good news. Looking more closely at finances, we also asked over the past couple of years, do you think the district's financial situation's gotten better, stayed about the same or gotten worse? As you can see by looking at the vertical bar chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 20% said it's gotten better, 40% said it's stayed about the same, 11% said it's gotten worse and 24% were unsure. Not a clear consensus here, but a plurality overall, I think it stayed about the same. Looking at the subgroup results on the right-hand side of the screen, there were no statistically significant differences between parents and non-parents, which is unusual because typically, yes. I'm sorry, did someone just ask a question?
No.
Okay, I'll go on. This is a bit unusual as typically, parents are more attuned to this than non-parents, but that wasn't the case. Also, among voters, there were no statistically significant differences. When we asked the same question in 2016, 27% said the district's financial situation's gotten better. 44% stayed about the same, 13% said it'd gotten worse and 15% were unsure. So fairly close to the outcomes we've observed this time. There hasn't been much notable movement in that area. We also asked prior to the survey, were you aware that the Lakota Local School District has not asked for a new levy since 2013? As you can see from the pie chart on the left-hand side of the screen, 47% said they were aware. However, 51% said, no, they were not aware and 2% were unsure. Looking at the subgroup results, were no statistically significant differences between parents and non-parents. Among 18 to 44-year-olds, just 35% were aware compared to 57% of 45 to 64-year-olds and 52% respondents 65 and older. 48% of voters were aware and 50%, a narrow majority, were not aware. But among non-registered respondents, 37% were aware and a whopping 63% were not aware. Among those respondents who indicated that the district was managing its finances in an excellent or good manner, 55% were aware. But curiously, among those who said rated the job the district has done in this area as poor or very poor, 74% were aware, which I thought was an intriguing finding. Now, looking at education, we asked, overall, how would you rate the quality of education being provided by the Lakota Local School District? As you can see from the horizontal bar chart, pardon me, vertical bar chart on the left-hand side of the screen, the total of 78% said excellent or good, which is exceptionally high. And I can tell you this as someone who probably works with more public school institutions in Ohio than anyone else in my field, so a vast basis of comparison. So if you want to take a moment and reach around and pat yourselves on the back, that's a really remarkable number. It was derived by taking the 29% who said excellent and adding to it the 49% who said good. 12% said fair, 3% said poor or very poor, which was derived by taking the 2% poor and adding to it the 1% very poor and 7% were unsure. Looking at the subgroup results on the right-hand side of the screen on the horizontal bar chart, 84% of parents said excellent or good, but impressively, even 73% of non-parents said excellent or good. And that was a statistically significant difference, but a pretty impressive one as well. Among public, private school parents, even 49% of them, that is, people who chose to enroll their children in other types of school opportunities, even nearly half of them rated the job you're doing as excellent or good. There were no statistically significant differences by gender. Among whites, 81% said excellent or good. And among respondents of other races, 69% said excellent or good. There were no statistically significant differences by age. And when we asked the same question in 2016, 81% said excellent or good, almost an identical outcome, which is really remarkable given how high the rating was. Another piece of good news. We also asked, how would you rate the job the Lakota Local School District does to meet the needs of a culturally and academically diverse student population? Looking at the left-hand side of the screen at the vertical bar chart, 58% said excellent or good, above the 50% threshold. And that 58% was derived by taking the 17% excellent and adding to it the 41% who said good. 18% said fair, 8% said poor or very poor, which is derived by taking the 6% poor and adding to it the 2% very poor and 16% of respondents were unsure. Looking at the subgroup results on the right-hand side of the screen, as you can see, among parents, 62% said excellent or good. Among white respondents, 63% said excellent or good. Among respondents of other races, there was a statistically significant difference compared with white respondents. For the former group, 39% said excellent or good, 22% said fair, 19% said poor or very poor and 20% were unsure. So there was a little bit of ambivalence there. When we asked the same question in 2016, 68% said excellent or good. So this is a rating that's dropped 10 percentage points in the last four years. We also asked about some various priorities. For example, we asked, do you think it should be a high, medium or low priority to continue expanding real-world learning experiences with businesses to expose students to different career paths, post-graduation options and provide skills they can't get in the classroom? As you can see, among all respondents, 74% said it should be a high priority. And that was the top performing priority among all respondents. Among parents, as you can see from looking at the columnar bar chart on the right-hand side of the screen, 75% said it should be a high priority, also the highest performing among the parent subgroup. Looking at continuing to develop programs to provide students with pathways for careers in advanced education in fields like cybersecurity, engineering, medicine, technology and entrepreneurship, 73% said it should be a high priority overall, including 72% of parents. 60% overall said it should be a high priority to continue expanding the use of technology already in place in our schools for teaching and learning. And that sentiment was shared by 58% of parents as well. None of these differences were statistically significant. The last one, however, was, when we asked, do you think it should be a high, medium or low priority to continue developing programming to meet the needs of a diverse student population, including different cultural backgrounds, languages and learning needs? 43% overall said it should be a high priority, but it was 50% among parents. Also want to point out, since there was a statistically significant difference here when we compared parents with non-parents, the latter group for whom 38% said it should be a high priority. So that was the only point of divergence when in testing these priorities. Looking at facilities, we asked, generally speaking, do you think that the current class sizes for Lakota local schools are too large, about the right size, too small? Or do you not have enough information to inform an opinion about this? As you can see from the vertical bar chart on the left-hand side of the screen, it's as clear as mud. 32% said too large, 23% said the right size, 2% said too small, 40% said they just did not have enough information and 3% were unsure. So plurality just were not aware or were oblivious to this matter. They didn't have enough information to form the opinions. As you can see by looking at the subgroup results on the right-hand side of the screen, among parents, 50% said class sizes are too large, suggesting parents are probably poised to act to mitigate this problem. But among non-parents, 61% said they did not have enough information to inform an opinion. Also, there was a statistically significant difference by gender. Among men, 23% said class sizes were too large, but 49% of plurality not have enough information. But among women, 40% say class sizes were too large. So there was an interesting difference there that may be actually, pardon me. Also, looking more closely at facilities. We asked, do you agree or disagree that although they may appear in good condition, many of the Lakota school buildings are too old to offer the kind of advanced modern education that can ensure students are prepared for a higher education or the workforce? The pie chart on the left-hand side of the screen indicates that just 24% agreed with that assertion and 53% a statistical majority disagreed with it, 23% were unsure. Looking at the results on the right-hand side of the screen, we also asked, generally speaking, do you support or oppose building new buildings and renovating existing ones to meet future educational enrollment needs in the community? Here, 64% supported the idea and 28% opposed the idea with 9% being unsure. Looking more closely at those who support the idea, it was 64% overall, including 70% among parents and 58% among non-parents, 64% among voters and 61% among those who weren't registered vote, which was not a statistically significant difference in the two groups we compared. And among those who in the previous question indicated that they felt class sizes were too large, whopping 78% support the idea. So it indicates that while there is some uncertainty and a lack of consensus about capacity needs or the conditions of the buildings, perhaps because of the good job that you're doing managing finances and educating children, it appears that you may have tapped into a deep reservoir of trust and confidence to indicate that there will be support for the notion of new buildings in order to meet educational needs. Let me recap my findings and then I'll open the floor for questions. First and foremost, the mood of the community and view towards the school system remain largely steadfast since 2016 despite turbulence that has been experienced by school systems throughout the country due to, among other challenges, the pandemic and staffing shortage. Next, performance ratings for key areas that were tested remained high and in most cases were consistent among the spectrum of various segments of the district's adult population. Next, residents' confidence in the district's management of tax dollars also remained high, but understandably, at this time, they did not appear particularly attuned to finances despite their confidence. And by that, I'm alluding to the absence of any strong opinions or strong sentiments about the school's financial condition. Next, ratings for the quality of education were exceptional across the board with most notably even a near majority of private school parents conceding that the quality of education in the schools was excellent or good, which is remarkable. Next, results regarding matters of adversity, pardon me, were somewhat murky as the rating for meeting the needs of a culturally and academically diverse student population dropped somewhat and meeting the needs of a diverse population ranked lower than other priorities that were tested, indicating that it is an area that may warrant more exploration to provide clarity. Next, a robust majority of parents, parents and residents, parents and non-parents alike, were content with the building conditions, but indicated they may be inclined to favor facilities improvements with support highest among those who believe class sizes were too large and it can be inferred they want more classroom space to be built. And lastly, most reassuringly, it was evident that the school system remains an integral part of the fabric of the community and serves as a magnet to attract and keep families in it, with even a majority of non-parents believing that they were getting a good return on their investments as residents. And let me close by commenting that this is one of my things, one of the things that I love the most because I get delivered good news isn't always the case in a lot of communities. So this is a refreshing change from what I've had to do lately for many of my clients. With that, I'll open the floor for any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon, for that very thorough summary. Board questions, Matt, Jenny comments?
We had the
We had the chance to hear from Paul a couple of weeks ago, so we took care of it there. But I think it speaks about what our target areas are for areas of improvement, but also gives us a pulse, I think, on our community. And we have some work to do, obviously, but we also have some things to be proud of.
I think it's impressive to me that what we talked about is that the strategic plan, I mean, it helps to live your strategic plan
Right.
and that people are aware of our strategic plan.
And that it's resonating.
And that it resonates with people. And I think that when we did our strategic plan, one of our goals was to make sure that it was a living, breathing document that you could understand, which is why, as simple as it sounds, it really isn't that simple. And it's just, it's an easier document to be able to live and breathe than a bunch of, you know, five-hundred-page thing in a binder that you throw on a shelf and never use again.
Yeah, the other thing I'll say about that, too, is just as a reminder for all of us, and I give credit to the executive team for that, is we contracted with somebody else to do that executive or to do that strategic plan for us, and it didn't feel like Lakota. And so, once we sort of took it over and we did it with with our people and our kids and what the needs are of our community, I think it became that living, breathing document. It wouldn't have been that if it'd be gone with somebody else.
It's more, it's more us and less can, which is what we represented
Correct.
when we did the hired them.
It was a good switch.
Paul, you mentioned that this is better news than what you've been having the privilege of presenting lately. So have you seen, overall, that if you looked at the time period of two thousand and sixteen or whenever other schools did their last survey to now, has the sentiment and the mood across the board been typically a downturn or static or improved for the general school population?
Well, I can't make a broad generalization, but I would say that a lot of public institutions, schools included, seem to be experiencing a lot of turmoil and as a result have seen their ratings change precipitously.
Okay, and then, looking at the top priority for people, there was hiring more teaching staff is thirteen percent, reducing class sizes is twelve percent, and the first ranking it seems to me that those go hand in hand. Is it appropriate for me to make, kind of combine those into twenty-five percent believe that general sentiment, or is that an inappropriate interpretation of the data?
No, I think that's a reasonable supposition, and those are integral aspects. I should mention, too, something I glossed over is that the highest-rated priority at forty-six percent was improving the quality of education. And strangely, that's a bit of a backhanded compliment because the rating for the quality of education is so stratospherically high, it's probably hard for people to imagine it getting better. But in the absence of what I infer to be any grievances, it's a default response that many people chose, but is by no means an indication that people have misgivings about the quality of education because the results specifically about that particular measure indicate that they don't.
Sure, I appreciate that. I feel like that should always be our North Star. Shoot, I have one more question, and now it's escaping my mind. Go ahead to somebody else.
We'll come back to you, Mrs. Billy.
Okay. Can I speak?
Sorry, Isaac, of course.
Yes, okay, Paul, that was a very good detailed analysis. Very interesting. One thing that caught my attention is the class size from the parents that said the class size is larger than normal. So my question to you is, compared to other school districts, is that a common thing now? Or is only peculiar to Lakota?
Um, boy, I think that varies from school district to school district. I live in a school district where the classes are, in some cases, just two-thirds full, and you never hear about matters like class sizes. So it's something that varies from place to place.
So can I now say, is it a good thing indicating that there are more families moving to the area? Or is it that we need to change our strategy in maybe hiring more teachers in that area? Or what is your take on that?
I'm not sure I'm the person to talk about solutions for various concerns. It's my job to identify and quantify them.
Right.
I would trust Matt and Jenny for those types of answers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isaac. Who is responsible for implementing this survey? Like, is this something that we got from, that we received communication from Columbus? Or is this something that Lakota decided to do on their own?
Lakota has done this periodically.
Okay, did you want to speak more to them?
No, you're right.
So about every five years, we've typically done a community survey to get the pulse, and some of the questions have remained static so that we can have some comparisons.
And it provides us feedback as we're looking at things like our facilities plan and updating our strategic plan, those kind of things.
And I mean, this has useful data. But and how do we come up with some of the questions? Who comes up with the questions that we ask?
I wrote them in collaboration with the administrative team. We began a process by which we discussed things that were important priorities to test as well as things that we wanted to repeat from the previous survey. And then I constructed the instrument.
Okay, thank you. And then, is this the only survey that you are responsible for? Are there other surveys as well that you are in charge of? Yes, for this district.
I believe this is the only one Mr. Fallon does for us.
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
So I was kind of surprised to find what the diversity needs among other races, the percentages. With so much focus on culturally responsive teaching, D E I, and the focus on diversity, I would expect our numbers to be a little bit lower. So I kind of would like to know, what is an action plan to ensure that we are meeting the needs among other races? And to lower those numbers?
I don't know if "lower" is the right word in that regard, but I think it's a great conversation for us to have at our meeting on Friday when we're focused on our diversity initiatives.
Well, I think we would want to lower fair or poor, very poor. I think those numbers we would want to lower.
But I want to raise excellent and good.
Right.
When you do that, then the other ones are going to go down.
And then, how many surveys do we send out to parents in the community per year?
This year, we've done, I believe it's three, because I mentioned that email to you earlier today. I asked Mr. Connor to get that for me, and as soon as he gets it to me, I'll get it to you.
And these are for parents?
And students.
And students as well. So we only do about three surveys?
I have to double-check when I get that back from him, but I believe that's what it is.
Okay. I would like to move to make a motion that all surveys are mailed to the parents with a exchange, with a return envelope, sorry, and that they, that the parents have the discretion to give this survey to their students if they choose to do so.
There was a motion on the floor to mail surveys with a return envelope so that parents can make that decision about the surveys. Did I capture that?
So they can make the decision to give the survey to their parents or to their students. And then, if they choose to do so, they can mail it back.
Is there a second? Hearing done, the motion fails. Do you have any further questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Julie, did you?
Sorry. Maybe now I'm confused. This survey was given to parents, not students, correct?
It was to community members, yes, adults.
It was all adults.
Okay. Julie, did you remember?
And I, it was more of a statement than a question. When I looked at this, I was, and I guess maybe for Mr. Fallon to weigh in, if this is typical or if this is a positive, that typically the parents rated us higher than community members, which to me, they're the closest to the users and know what's actually happening in the school. Is that some, I take that as a positive. Is that an appropriate interpretation?
I concur.
And the flip side might be that we have communication to do with our broader community to help get more information out there so that it's more factually based. Anything else? Anyone? I agree with the comments that were made and really appreciate what comes out of this. And you'll be surprised as we proceed through our conversations and planning is these will continue to surface forward. So it really, it does inform our opinions. I do want to say for, in addition to the other comments that were made in terms of the priorities, and I've said this before, Butler Tech only has the ability to provide career tech and those kind of real-world learning experiences for a small number of students compared to our overall general population. And I continue to think that we have to be, just like we have with the Cybersecurity Academy, we have to embed more career tech into our K through twelve buildings. So I hope that that's something we continue to talk about, and I think you're in agreement with that.
I'm totally agreeing with that. At the end of the day, all of us, I think in this room, want our kids to move on and prosper from Lakota. And part of our responsibility is to find them those opportunities.
Very good. Anything else, board? Mr. D?
No, nothing for now.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for having me this evening. Always a pleasure. Take care, everyone.
Thank you very much. Mr. Conover, are you with us? All right, we'll move to the Public Records and Sunshine Law Training provided by Brody Conover.
Maybe I'll just speak a little bit more closely into it. Sorry about that. Well, thanks for having me tonight. I have some, the bad news is that this does not satisfy your statutory required training. The good news is, is this, we won't be here for three hours to do that, so you can.
I'm signed up for doing the three-hour training on behalf of all of them next week.
You need to say thank you to Ms. Lo.
Thank you for taking it for the team, Jenny.
Taking one for the team.
But I just wanted to come here again and provide some kind of updates and guidance to you all. Obviously, I think we heard from Paul tonight that, you know, school boards and not just school boards, but I would say all local government is really facing some really difficult items with meetings and records and openness and transparency, and not in a bad way, but just new challenges or experiences with it. So we've been doing this with a number of our, you know, clients with school boards or township trustee boards or city councils and things like that, just to really kind of drive in on what's really relevant to you all and how we can be helpful or kind of tips of the trade a little bit to what to expect and how to handle it. And I'm actually, you know, glad that the public's here because these are the folks that attend your meetings and probably are using this, the other side of this equation with the board sitting kind of behind the dais, but then also the public here as well. So I'll kind of cover three topics, build on each other as we get there. The first thing I want to talk about is kind of the role of the board. And Jill or Ms. Schaefer, sorry, you mentioned the word governance. And I think that's, you know, really cuts at what you all here as the school board are to do. And same thing with the city council or board of towns and trustees. You are here, the governing authority for the school district in this case. Your role really is to hire a superintendent and a treasurer and let them do their job. And, you know, you were fortunate to have two of the best in the state here in Lakota. And the comments that you all said this morning, earlier this meeting, I would just echo, they both do a really great job for you. And, you know, I'd hold on to them as long as you can. So but that really is kind of what you all are tasked statutorily to do. Now, you also set policy, set policy for the district. But that really is kind of at a high level. A lot of it is governed by the revised code. But, you know, it's what you're here to do and to provide guidance, governance to your administrators. Obviously, you still approve all kind of staff approvals and that, but it's always the recommendation of the superintendent where you guys get to decide who that superintendent or that treasurer is. It does really kind of limit your kind of, what I would say, in-the-weeds management of the district. Certainly ask questions, you know, I know you said that, is it Bodie? Sorry, thank you, Ms. Bodie. Ask questions. I encourage that, and I think good discussion amongst the board is a good thing. And I think we've seen a lot more of that recently in the last two, three, four years in local government. So I do encourage that. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I do think you hire your administrator to trust them, and that's really your guys' role as a board. The other thing that I would do is you guys speak through kind of your official pronouncements as a board. So what I mean by that is your meeting minutes are from the Board of Education. Your resolutions, your motions, things like that are from the Board of Education. So that's where you're going to be kind of speaking out. You each have your own voice individually. You know, Ms. O'Connor, you're the chair, and you can speak as your role as the chair of the board or as an individual board member, same thing for each of you individually. And we encourage you to do that. If you disagree with the decision, say so. But when the board speaks, if I, lack of a better word, as a whole, it does so through its kind of minutes, resolutions, motions, and things like that. So speaking of meetings, that's kind of the next thing I want to cover. I won't bore you too much with all the technical details, but anytime the three-part definition of a meeting is a pre-arranged gathering of a majority members of the board when you're discussing or deliberating on the public's business. There are some exceptions to that, but generally, anytime there's three of you together or three of you are talking or anything like that, I'd be very, very careful about how you handle that, unless it's been noticed when we're in a board meeting in front of everyone else or if it's a specially noticed board meeting, board retreat, work session, things like that. And, you know, I would say that we've seen a lot of issues with this as technology kind of as more commonplace. It's easy to pick up your phone and shoot a text to a fellow board member. That's fine if it's just one of you. But the second, and I think the City Council is the best example of this. They had the gang of five a few years ago, and it's still costing the city about eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year, three or four years later, defending those civil suits. Now, I think there's even some criminal actions that were brought. So, you know, if there's a group text chain or reply all to an email, I'd just be very careful with that. And, you know, we deal with, like I said, it's very easy and convenient to do that. You frequently will get, you know, maybe a blast of information from superintendent or the treasurer saying, hey, here's these three items that are going to be on the board agenda, or here's a brief update of what's going on in the district. Those are fine, just don't reply all. And it's very easy to do that. Obviously, if you have a concern, pick up the phone, call Matt or Jenny or another board member, or you could reply directly to them. But I would be just careful about the reply all. We, clients get in trouble for that all the time, and it's just a loser if we get sued, and I don't want to do that.
Brody, one question. I know one of the suggestions that Matt and I have heard is maybe one way that we could approach that is because we do communicate to them in a group joint email or text, but is to email them and blind copy the board. So that way, if they do respond, that they're just responding back to the sender so that if they accidentally would reply to all, that option would not be there, and it would not look like any type of deliberation. And so that might be one way. Would you, I mean, do you think that would be a good?
That's an easy solution. The tricky part is, is I don't want the board members in just blind copying everyone to say, hey, here's my thoughts on X, Y, Z to you and copying or blind copying the other board members because we'll get into like the nerdy metadata and see who is copying on stuff, and it becomes a mess. And if a judge is like, I don't know what the heck's going on here, but my clerk's telling me that you all were on this. We might run into a little bit of trouble. But I think that's the easy solution because then, when you all get the information blast, you can't, you press reply, right? And it's to Jenny or Matt or both of them rather than the full board. So I think that's a really easy solution to do that and a great idea because it's a best practice. Legally, there's no requirement for that, but I do think it's probably the best thing you can do just to prevent, you know, a mistake. I mean, mistakes happen, right? You know, I just want to try to protect y'all as best I can because we've had to deal with some lawsuits, you know, over the last few years. And we really are trying to avoid that to preserve, not just to follow up, preserve the taxpayers' dollars and hopefully not waste it on stuff like that. So, yeah, that's it. Now, again, and I think I saw the next item is related to the Policy Committee. And we, I want to talk a little bit about committees. Just because there's only two of you on a committee doesn't mean that it's not a public meeting. We still need to properly notice that and take meeting minutes and all that fun stuff. And, you know, we worked, you know, pretty closely over the last year, year and a half to, you guys are pretty squared away on this, better than most public bodies in the state, I will say. I'm not encouraging people to go look at other public bodies, but very rarely do they notice, you know, committee meetings and things like that. So you guys are doing well on that, but it's basically like a sub-body of the larger bodies. So it's, if you have two of you on a policy committee, for example, and both of you are there, it's still a meeting for purposes of the Open Meetings Act and needs to be held publicly and that sort of thing. So it's just something to be think about. And, you know, we had a discussion, too, about administrative bodies and what that means. Is it a superintendent committee or is it a board committee? And again, Matt and Jenny are pretty well-versed on this now, so we've got that pretty squared away. squared away. But I just, again, and this isn't to say you can't talk to other people, to other board members about what you're doing. If you happen to, three of you be at the same restaurant one night and you say, hi, it's not the end of the world. But I would just be wary of, hey, let's meet at, you know, Cozy's and have lunch, three of you. And we'll, we'll talk about, you know, a new football coach or something like that. I don't know. But, you know, just be, just be careful of that. The other thing I want to talk about, I think, is the public participation. That has been a very hot topic across the country. And everyone's dealing with it in different ways. I think you guys have made some updates to your public participation policy over the last year, year and a half. Some of that was to clean up some language from a recent case across the way from Madison's, Madison School District, related to what the chair, the power of the chair to shut down certain comments. And, you know, Ms. O'Connor as the board chair, a lot of it does rest with you as kind of the presiding officer of, of the, of the meetings. I think the policy pretty clearly specifies if you need to shut down speech or tamper things or control things, I would say your meetings here are business meetings, right? You hear, you hear on your, your time to serve the community as elected officials and to conduct the business of the board. We're not here to, no offense to everyone, stay here all night and just let, let you talk and talk and talk. There are many avenues that community members can speak with you, right? We want to hear from the community. That's important to your guys' governance of the board, of the district. But you're able to put, you know, again, this is like nerdy law stuff. I'm really sorry, guys. It's like what we call time, place, and manner restrictions. So basically, I don't care what you're saying, but here's how you can say it. Here's a certain time limit. Here's the, you know, you can't get up and yell F you this and F you that, that sort of thing. But it allows you to basically govern the time, place, and manner. So we don't really care what they're saying. Once they start speaking, we're going to kind of let them speak unless they start to disrupt the meeting and things like that. And once they do that, you know, I think, Ms. O'Connor, you, you're perfectly professional and capable of, you know, warning them to stay within the, the confines of the public participation policy that the, the district has. And, you know, moving forward to have an efficient, effective board meeting, again, because you don't want to be here all night. They don't want to be here all night. But again, there's other avenues for them to speak to you. They can call you, email you, they can email the full board, I believe. They can talk to the administration before or after the meeting. There's a number of ways that they can, you know, community members can, can speak to you all to offer praise or concern or anything like that. So th- those, I think are, you're not alone. A lot of places are dealing with this, especially as tensions of get, get high, right? Of important issues to people that really matter to them and their families. And it's just finding a way to professionally run a business meeting, for example. The, the third part I'll talk about again, pretty quickly is the, the records portion of this. And we've kind of talked around it. But generally, anything you guys create is a record, a public record. Anything you receive, anything you send from your, your, you know, send from your position as a board member. It doesn't really matter what you do it from. Doesn't matter if it's your Lakota email address, your Gmail address, your personal cell phone number, anything like that. What matters is, does it document the activities and function of the, of the district? So again, these, these are some nerdy subjects, but, you know, it's whether they, you know, my wife's a teacher in Lebanon, we live in, I might email her and say, what's for dinner on her school address? Because that's what she checks during the day. She ignores me otherwise. And, you know, just because I've asked what's for dinner tonight, doesn't mean that that's a public record, even though she's using her school address. So again, it has to really kind of document the function of, of the district. I will say again, the auditor of state has really taken an interest in public records the last few years. He's created this fancy scoring system where I think he gets some star, like golden stars or something like that. I think you guys are doing very well, but I do just want to point out that the auditor state's really cracking down. And so what we've done over the last year, year and a half is really implement a pretty robust public records policy of like the process, right? So we have to log every single public records request comes in. I think everyone on, on the board knows, but also in the community, I think it's like public records requests@lakotaonline.com. So if you get one in your individual capacity, whether it's spoken to you or emailed to you, whatever, just forward it onto that request. Because, and then we kind of begin to process them and we log them all because the auditor of state will come in and check to make sure that we're keeping track of them, that we're responding to them in a timely manner. So it's, you know, really fun, scintillating stuff, but it is important for us to, you know, get a clean audit. So, you know, we, we've created that process to make sure nothing falls through the cracks, to make sure that we're timely responding and that we're responding in a, you know, a legal way. The, the law gives us a reasonable period of time to respond. And some of the people over here may think that's not quite quickly enough, but I will just say, you know, Lakota, like nearly every public entity in the state doesn't have a full-time public records person that falls under to Ms. Logan as the public records custodian. And she's got some other important duties for the district. Not to say that, you know, accessing records and being transparent isn't important because it is. But I do just want to reiterate that it is on her list of things to do. I promise she's working on it probably every day. But it is something that takes a little bit of time. But it's important that we as the district know what's going out too, because it's important that we're not releasing student records, for example. School districts have some very harsh penalties if we're intentionally or unintentionally releasing certain types of data as it relates to students. And we just want to be very careful that we're not doing anything by, you know, sending it. Maybe you receive something or request and you're like, oh, no, I've got this in my email. I'll just shoot it out. I just would ask you to please be very careful about that just because we, one, we need to track it. So we, we've logged it in our log for the auditor of state. But two, I'm just really trying to do anything I can to eliminate any potential liability or risk the district might have. So that I think is all I had on my list. If there's anything from Matt or Jenny or any of the board members have questions, certainly happy to take those. I didn't bring a fancy PowerPoint, I'm sorry. But I can obviously sheet any material as y'all want.
It's good. Thank you.
Yeah. I think you covered the topics we expected you to cover. So.
I, I had a question. Where do you get your training on the laws, the sunshine laws?
Me personally or anyone in general?
You personally, what you just reiteratedated. What, where do you get your training? Is it from the OSBA or is it from?
No, so I, I started my career at the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and we have what's called the Public Records Unit where we create the model public records policy for the entire, every public agency in the state. I helped write the Yellow Book, which is the Ohio Sunshine Law Manual. So it's kind of the, what every public body in the state uses. So, and I represent.
Does Mrs. Bodie, in all fairness, Mrs. Bodie, did, does she know that you are an attorney?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I do. Okay.
I didn't know if you knew.
Yeah. So I, I don't want to like brag, but I'm probably one of the- I, I, I mean, I do this more than-
Permission. Go ahead.
I do this more than I must say anyone else in the state on a day-to-day basis.
Okay.
And I've never presented even at the OSBA.
Okay, great.
Do you have more questions?
Thank you.
Mr. D, do you have any questions?
Yes, I lost contact a little bit. There was something I didn't hear well. But the question I'm going to ask, whether somebody already had, asked at the time I was out, I don't know. Please pardon me. What do you say about policy on social media?
What do you say about commenting on social media?
I hate social media from a legal perspective. No, you know, it's one of those things that you, you have to have in today's world. It's tricky because really when we focus on public records or meetings or anything like that, we don't really care what the medium is. We don't care if it's an email or a poster in a school or, you know, a text message. We, what we care is what it's about. So, you know, I would, and we've got retention, pages and pages of retention schedules that govern how the district manages and maintains that sort of stuff. So, you know, for example, a Facebook, we've got a Facebook group or a Facebook page. We will make posts and then people comment on them probably. I'm sure it's all high praise because I know how Facebook operates. But I would just say, we would treat that much like any sort of correspondence that we might get. And I think correspondence is a category in our retention schedules. I don't remember the exact timeframe, maybe two years for kind of general correspondence. So we would archive, save those Facebook posts, or we wouldn't remove those Facebook posts, for example. They would stay there and be accessible for the two-year period. And then we would be permitted to get rid of them. I will say practically speaking, with everything is in the cloud and all this kind of other stuff, it's cheaper and more efficient just to hold on to it rather than, you know, waste the man-hours of going through, you know, and organizing and deleting every single record once we're able to. And that's really, you know, I, I wouldn't want to waste anyone's time here doing that. And there's no harm in doing it. You just have to produce it when we get a public records request for it. So I hope that answers your question specific to social media. It's really treated no differently than we would if it was just like a, you know, a signup sheet out on the, you know, secretary's office or something like that.
Did that answer your question, Mr. D?
Yes, thank you so much.
Is there, along those same lines, is there any, I guess, much like three of us sitting at lunch at Cozy's discussing the football coach, is there any, like, should he be commenting on social media with, like, answering questions? Or, I mean?
Yeah, it's a tricky question, right? Because I mean, we say a single Facebook post is a meeting space. I'm going to say no. You know, again, I would only caution you that you're saying that in your individual capacity, you know, Ms. Casper, the board member. And, you know, you wouldn't necessarily be speaking on behalf of the board. But I do think it's, you know, you certainly can, and I would encourage you all to engage with the community. I don't want it to seem like I'm saying, don't do anything. That's not the case at all. I think you guys are, you were elected for a reason and you, you need to engage with the community that elected you. And certainly encourage you to do that.
So if there's a training somewhere at another location and we are invited-
Yeah.
-to it.
Sure.
Are we breaking any sunshine laws if we are there to learn this, to experience this training?
So no, the, the, one of the exceptions is what we would call an information gathering session. So, you know, if you all didn't grace Ms. Logan with the opportunity to attend one of these trainings, you all five could go. And yeah, you're learning about your responsibility as a board member, but you're, you're there to learn and gather information. So that's exactly, you know, sorry, I should have talked about that. There's just, we, I don't want to be here all night. And then they don't want to be here all night either. So.
Right, thank you.
You got it.
As long as we're not discussing board business while we're there.
Right.
Are there other questions?
I have a few. So you, you mentioned the whole social media piece. Can public records be posted on social media or is that to be avoided?
So, once they're a public record, it, once they're created, they are a public record, we would release them. And it's, this is goofy. You can actually make a public records request, a public records request, like responses. So, yeah, you know, I, I wouldn't be out there monitoring it or anything because they are public records and, you know, they probably can be made available. I would, again, I just, I want to make sure that we're funneling everything through the process so we know what's out, what's going out.
But if it hasn't been requested as a public record, can it still go out?
So that's where we get into the, I'd like the policy to be followed just because we need to track what's going out. And I don't want to, I want to make sure that nothing is being sent out or released that shouldn't have been. If it's a public record, it's a public record. But again, I just, this is more just for our protection, for the audit and things like that, that we really follow our policies. So we know what's being sent out and, you know, able to, again, just ensure that we're limiting the exposure and liability of the district.
Okay. And you mentioned that it becomes a public record if asked to do it's a function of the district?
Yeah.
So I will admit that up to this point, I pretty much save every email, whether it's a junk, like vendor solicitation email. So are you saying if it's some, basically a spam email that they're sending to, you know, 200 people, they've looked up our board addresses, that that would not necessarily be a public record? Or is it? Like, do I still have to keep eight million emails?
It's funny what happens when your email's just sitting on a website, right? What you'll get. So the junk mail wouldn't be something that you use in your role as a board member. So you certainly could, that would be a non-record and wouldn't be covered by your retention schedule. You can get rid of them.
Okay, just, I've been paranoid.
Don't delete, just at will, but.
And, and I guess I still find it confusing because you said, when does a meeting notice need to happen? A pre-arranged majority of the board and deliberations. But as we know, we got burned because we didn't previously, as most, many public entities, notice our committee meetings because we thought, oh, there's two. It's not-
Sure.
-a majority of the board. So is that only exception to that committee meetings? Or are there other exceptions where a minority of the board can be present and it still needs to be a notice meeting?
So we're getting real into the weeds here.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine. That's fine. People are just judging me for knowing so much. So really what happens is public body is what, is what the Open Meetings Act applies to. And so the, the governing authority specifically is named, the school board is specifically named in the definition. And then also included in the definition are committees of a public body. So you really become your own public body. So, you know, the, the security committee, I assume we have, right? That's its own public body. And so you may have two board members, Matt, Jenny, and, you know, the assistant superintendent. So there's five people on that board. So really, the two board members cannot be there and it's still a public body because there's three of the committee are there. But, you know, the, the committees is really where that's going to apply to you guys. If there's two of you, you know, and you're talking about XYZ as it relates to the school district, you're in the clear to do that. So.
Okay.
Brody, what about, what about the sunshine law when it pertains to an email? Let's say that somebody sends me an email or sends us all an email and answers a question, asks a question. What if Linda responds and then I respond and then Darby responds? Does that become a bad thing?
That's where I would hate for you guys to keep hitting reply all. I think a general acknowledgement, right, of-
Not reply all as much as Linda's going to answer Becky Smith.
Sure.
We're all going to get it. Linda's going to say, this is what I think Becky Smith. And then I'm going to say, this is what I think Becky Smith. And then-
Can't put it on the same email tree.
Yeah, that's, that's right. So if it's, if you're all still on the chain, I generally don't love that. I think a general acknowledgement of like, hey, thank you. We got it. That's not really getting into the weeds. But if you, you know, Ms. Casper get into, well, I really appreciate and agree with you that, you know, we should build five new high schools and this is how we should do it. And, you know, all that kind of stuff. And you copied everyone. I wouldn't love it. But I, I think, you know, it, it, it gets trickier when we're not replying to each other, if that makes sense. So really, it's your discussions and deliberations amongst each other, not necessarily your communications or thoughts to a community member.
So if, a follow-up, is so if Becky Smith sends just me an email and I respond with whatever my opinion is, do I, should I copy the rest of the board or no?
I, I, I wouldn't. Just because it starts to give your kind of thoughts on your deliberation. Again, it's, it's, that might be like a slightly level removed, but I just, I don't want to have to defend it, honestly.
I guess now it seems like Becky Smith knows what everybody's opinion is. So each other, like, so we just are changing our practice right now for how board emails are answered.
Okay.
And so it's my understanding from the way it was presented that like a generic note will go out and it'll be signed to Lakota Board of Ed. And correct me if I misunderstood this process. And then if it, like, so just an acknowledgement of receipt essentially. And then if it needs further follow-up, that may be done by the administration or it may be done, again, our practice has always been the board president has answered emails. So, but the, if there was further note that went out answering, it may come from this generic Lakota Board of Ed email address with the answer. And then when I expressed concern about that, I was told, well, then you just reply with your own answer. But again, that then concerns me because it feels like now you're saying, don't do a reply all. But if we don't do that, again, Becky Smith still knows. And then Becky Smith spreads it all around that, well, I talked to each one of them. And now, you know, Darby, Julie, and Kelly are going to support that because they told me so. And, you know, Isaac and Linda told me they aren't. And I don't know.
Just started another rumor, Julie.
We, we generally call that round robbie, round robin-ing. And like, Matt can't do that really. He can't call and say, all right, we're going to do Y. Ms. Bodie, what do you want? Ms. Schaefer, what do you want? Ms. Casper, you know, and do that. We generally can't do that. And then, wow, I don't have the votes, so I'm not going to do it. Now, Matt and Jenny solicit feedback. Listen carefully about your guys' thoughts. Whether it's a citizen gets a little trickier. And, and I'll be frank, I want to make sure I understand. So right now, there's like the board@lakotaonline.com that would go to all of you, for example. Ms. O'Connor as the board chair, you would say, thank you. We, we got it, basically. Sign that.
Well, it could be, it could be a staff member. It could be the board president. It could be one of our administrators. It really depends on what the email is about.
But the initial, the first, the contact, the-
There's an automatic response. There's an automatic response, so sign by the board.
Received. Sure. And that just says
Board of Education.
Sure. Thanks, we got it. Right? And it'll be directed to whomever. I think our public records emails, pretty darn similar to that.
And anything that's sent out from the Lakota Board of Education from the school board email goes to the entire board and to Matt and Jenny.
Okay.
So everyone's fully in the loop on it.
Sure. You know, again, you're not necessarily discussing and deliberating amongst each other. So I understand, you know, your point, Julie or Ms. Schaefer, about, you know, we don't want to necessarily be crossing wires here. You know, I think that the best practice, the safest practice is to not copy the board email on there. You could take that off, right? And just reply individually. But again, I think so long as you're not, you know, Julie, you necessarily respond. And then, you know, Ms. Bodie says, well, I totally agree with Julie, or I think Julie's crazy, or something like that. And this is XYZY. And then, you know, Ms. O'Connor jumps in and says, well, I agree with both of them, or neither of them, or none of them, or however you want to do it. That's where it starts to get into the kind of deliberations that would get into
Individual emails. Either the individuals on a one train.
Right.
Is what you're talking about.
Yeah. I just hate to start replying further down the train or, I don't know what we would call that. There's probably
So at this point, no board members reply back on that train.
I would just take it away from the board response, right? You can take that, I assume we can take that board@lakotaonline.com off of the, your response. And then you would reply to Becky Smith or whatever.
You can just hit reply and it will specifically send it back to that person.
Becky Smith.
Individually, yes.
That's kind of what I was. If I'm disrupting what you guys have said.
Maybe we might.
We'll chat.
Chat about the process and best practices and all of that. I mean, I know we've had a, since I've been here, we've had a practice that the board president responds to all the emails and copies in the rest of the board so that they know exactly what's, and it, it's always signed on behalf of the board with that president's name. So, yeah, maybe it's, and I know, we're changing, but really, we're just changing letting everybody know, we did get a response, or we did get your email.
It's really not changing practice.
And can I ask a clarifying question? Is the answer like, what's the answer? I, I know that's, you can't answer that without knowing the question. Is it, you know, how many teachers are there in the district? And, you know, Ms. O'Connor would say
It could be anything. It could be factual, it could be opinioned, it could be, here are my concerns, I want you to know as you talk about this. It, it's a pretty broad
Fair enough.
range of issues.
We'll, we'll connect on that and we'll, we'll report back through Jenny and Matt.
I do have a question on that subject, only because I'm new to the board and I'm, I do not understand the process. So if you we are emailed as a board and I have a specific question pertaining to the, the communication or the, the conversation that was emailed to us. I can reply back to that one person individually and ask for more clarification, just so I am in the loop and I understand exactly what that person is meaning.
I think that I would answer that in a separate email because you would have received the original email. Don't reply back on that train. Do that as a separate.
Straight to Becky Smith, right?
Yeah.
If there's a Becky Smith in here, I'm sorry.
To ask for clarification?
Yeah.
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 You don't lose your voice just because you're
Right.
one person, right? Of five.
Yeah. And then you mentioned, like, the presiding officer and maintaining the order of the meeting and such. And I know we've had issues again in the past with time and, like, we have a three-minute limit.
Yeah.
How, I'm sorry, I'm too far from mine. How far or how important is it to make sure we keep to that three-minute limit for, or?
You know, again, I think about, I litigate as my primary job and I think about what's easier to defend in a lawsuit. And consistency is important because that way we don't have to say, well, it really wasn't because of what they're saying, why we let them go long, or we let them go short. So I do think, you know, a lot of public bodies or public, you know, boards and city councils have a little timer. And when you're three, that way you can see it. And you were three minutes or five minutes is up, you, you say, thank you. Come again. They can certainly email comments because oftentimes they're prepared comments. I think people find that easier to do. But yeah, I mean, I'd really like if you were consistent.
I don't think it's appropriate to cut somebody off mid-sentence, Brody.
Well, you know, if you want to let them finish their sentence, this is what I always say with a judge, right? You know, that they're gonna
Close to the three as possible.
Yeah, really close to the three.
Would you mind saying that that way?
Really close to the three. Practice in the mirror, that's what we all used to do, right? I won't sit down, nevermind. Go ahead.
Do you have anything else, Julie?
I think that's on my notes. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Good.
Isaac, do you have any further questions?
No. Thank you so much, Mr. Boyd.
You gotta thank you.
Matt and Jenny, anything? I think our new line is going to be, Brody won't love that. Brody will love, thank you very much for your time.
Brody.
Thank you.
Brody.
Thank you.
That's ever happened before.
Students like
We'll go to, we don't normally allow applause, Brody, but for that one, yeah. For number seven on our agenda, we are at discussion of the policy committee structure. We've been having some conversation about that, so I will let Matt and Jenny discuss that.
Yep, just for the board's discussion, I guess, would be that that committee, we started with two representatives. It felt like at our last board meeting, we were rejoining the committee with all five. So I guess I'm throwing it out there, is do you want to keep it with the two, go to five? My previous district, we had the Neola Rep and Administration met and then brought that to the board for a first reading. Our first reading. So I think, in my opinion, those are the three options that the board needs to figure out.
You want to bring that down one more time, just so Isaac heard everything.
Sure. So I think the three options are, keep it with the two committee members we have. Last time it felt like we, we did the committee again here at the board table, and that's fine, but that was all five. And I'm not sure how I feel about that part. And then, in my previous two districts, we had the administration work with Neola and then brought policies forth for first reading. So.
Jenny, did you have thoughts?
Maybe it's too soon to make a shift. I don't know.
Right. I, I just get concerned when we spend, but we had an hour and a half policy committee meeting and then over an hour at the board meeting. So it's, it's really about finding that right structure that's going to work for this board. And, you know, Brody just talked about, policy is one of those main functions of the board. And we just want it to be a productive meeting and productive use of everybody's time. So I would agree with Matt, like, we have three choices. And, and maybe the last meeting was a one-time occurrence, but if not, that's not gonna work. I, I mean, I'm just saying, that, that really was not productive. So maybe it was a one-and-done. But if not, we probably should look at alternatives.
I think the process last, last time, when the policy changes were made the night before without any discussion, was hurtful to the process. So I think we discussed this with Rob, and this could be something that we try as well. Maybe a week before or a couple of days before, whoever would like to make some adjustments to the policy, communicate it to one of us so that we are aware of your, the thought process behind the policy. And that would clear up any confusion that we had because we were unaware of the reason that these policies were being updated, because we had received a policy update. I think a week before that. And then the night before, there was a bunch more updates. So that was a little confusing. And I think that slowed the process. So if we could come up with a a way that we are communicated that, that any changes are communicated to us prior, a couple of days beforehand, so that we know exactly what is the reasoning.
No, or, so we had talked about changing our procedure so that there was a definitive procedure, so that we could avoid some of the confusion that happened at the last board or the last policy meeting. And then I think carried over to the board meeting. So again, we've done it this way for a period of time, which doesn't always mean that we need to do it that way going forward. But when it has been successful and it just wasn't successful at the last meeting, I don't know if we try procedures first and then if that's ineffective, move to another alternative. Or, you know, we just completely abandon it immediately. And I don't know how that works when it's been set up during the org meeting, if it can just be arbitrarily changed through the year.
Need to be a board vote.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I'm, I, I hope that the last meeting was an anomaly, but I think until we get through those policies, honestly, I think those will continue to need to be full board discussions. So I don't know how much time we spend on those in the policy committee. But hopefully, some of the more routine policies, like Neil is bringing forward, I believe 30 policies at the next policy meeting. We could potentially, hopefully, go through those in a more expedited manner and but again, I'm open to reconsidering if it continues to not work. But I don't know if we make those wholesale, wholesale changes with three very highly emotionally charged policies that we started the year with.
And I do ask a lot of questions, so I might need some.
Do we want to consider this meeting, trying it, continuing it to the way we've done it and see how this meeting goes, knowing and maybe putting a time limit on the three policies that we know are contentious and that are going to probably end up here anyway? And first of all, see if there can be any headway made there. And if not, there should be a time limit and not hours and hours. And then here, hours and hours, let's just come right here for hours and hours. And then just put, you know, our standard policy, the Neola policies, 30 policies sounds like a lot, but if they're just standard changing a word here and there, we know that they don't take all that long.
Yeah, usually it's an update of the, the revised code is often the impetus.
Mr. Adi?
Yes. I think at this point, my suggestion would be that let's try it again to see if it is either unique to that because of the, 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 the changes that we're trying to make in that policy that, that created the problem, or it is necessary for all of us to be in in that, in a committee, in a policy committee. Because I think we have three, we have three committees that all board members are in it right now. Am I right?
Yes.
So if we're gonna add this, that's gonna be the fourth one. So my suggestion would be, let's try it again and see how it goes. Then we can come back to the drawing board. That'll be my suggestion.
Thank you, Isaac. Go ahead.
I, I do think that, to Julie and Darby's point, that we should have some sort of process in order for anybody, any of us that want to communicate to the policy committee.
Anyone else?
Again, I would like to implement that and maybe even ask Rob if he has ideas and thoughts to bring forward, or at least ask that for this next policy meeting, I guess that would be though.
Friday.
Friday, yeah. So we're already within a week, but to not, because we often do have to vet things through legal or because all the Neola policies have already been vetted through legal. So when we're making last-minute changes, we have to review them and make sure they're acceptable. So again, the more notice, but maybe we can put those procedures in place in the future. Even, even if it does become the whole board that has to ultimately review them in this meeting to make sure no changes come in, but maybe ask if Rob would be willing to work on drafting some revisions to our protocols.
Yep.
I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I think I would agree with that.
So I would be comfortable with trying it again as a, two, two board reps on it. I think if it's not effective this time, I will be very comfortable with our superintendent and treasurer, Mr. Vogelmann doing it and bringing forward ideas to the entire board rather than doing two whole board meetings. It just makes more sense to do that. And it could be set up as a regular part of our work agenda. So we can see how it goes this time. Does that work for everyone? Okay.
Good conversation.
Sure.
Alright. Thank you. Move to number eight on the agenda, the superintendent and treasurer action items. A, approve personnel, B, approve field trips, and C is to approve the board minutes from February 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion? So moved. Thank you, Julie. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Darby. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just noticed that John McCutcheon is on here and I, he's the custodian and Adina. And while we have many amazing custodians to see that he was on here for retirement, I know there's going to be many heartbroken children in that building because he's such an integral part of the fabric. You look like you're
I wasn't gonna call that out because it, like, there's other people retiring too, but man, that one does, they all hurt, right?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
With the kids, yeah. You don't have to approve him.
We can say, no, you're not retiring.
Oh, yes.
Have to pull him out separately.
Yes, yes. So, I mean, as to your point, every staff member that we lose is really important to our district. But it, again, there's certain ones that a larger community have touched and been touched by. And
And I've, I've seen John do presentations in front of teachers and
Yeah.
board members and everything else. And, and
He's earned that retirement, though. God love him.
Going to rock star. Any other comments or questions? There ain't nothing further. Would you call the room?
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. Adi?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes. Madam President, if I may have the floor. Yes.
Thank you. Critical race theory. Critical race theory is a toxic philosophy that is poisoning and destroying the minds and souls of our children.
This is Brody. I have your floor.
Making a motion?
I just wanted to get some recognition of some things. I have the floor, so if you don't mind.
Are you making a motion?
I have the floor. I would like to continue. Terms like diversity, inclusion, cultural responsiveness, equity, cultural awareness as defined and used by the parameters of critical race theory are I have the floor.
The member is out of order. Are you making a motion? We'll be happy to listen to a motion if you have one.
This is not a motion.
Then perhaps you could save that for closing comments?
We'll make an opportunity for
I have the floor. I would like to continue, please. I think we'll complete our business first and we'll allow closing comments at the end. Thank you. We move to our public comment section, number nine. This will be for 45 minutes. This is our only public comment section. And we would ask you to restrict it to three minutes. Remember, Brody will not love anything over three minutes. We'll ask you to state your name as you come forward. And please do not address any board members individually, address us as a group. And I'm going to call you in order, call your name, and then we'll have somebody on deck for the next round. First up, Mr. Hunter Oswald. And Angela Oswald will follow.
Are we gonna hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, make sure. So Hunter Oswald, I come tonight to show my support for House Bill 290 and address a few concerns about expanding school vouchers for students in Lakota. First, we must recognize that citizens of Lakota School District should not be required to subsidize other families who have kids in the school district. No one is entitled to the fruits of another man's labor. And this kind of mentality of entitlement is a tyranny of the majority. Second, it is self-evident that when competition is set free and market forces begin their work, then progress and success will occur. The back-back pill will allow for this competition to exist that creates the atmosphere and incentives for the creation of better products and services at a lower cost for the consumer. According to the American Economic Association, 67.1% of economists agree that parents should be given educational vouchers that be get, that be used. that parents should be given educational vouchers that be get that be used at government-run or privately-run schools Lakota Schools needs to be competitive and offer better services for the community to retain students that are already in the school if Lakota School Districts provides a better service than than others and Lakota should have no concerns or worries about students leaving third the backpack bill will provide will help provide give students more opportunities to gain better education especially among minority communities and those with disabilities the Birkenstock Institute a left-leaning institute admitted that minority students saw higher achievements in academics because school vouchers were expanded education next an educational organization did a study showing that education savings accounts have allowed for students with disabilities to gain more access to special educational services and better academic performance other institutions such as Harvard the National Bureau of Economic Research American Enterprise Institute Hoover Institution and many others have come out saying that school vouchers are the key to allowing our children to have a brighter future fourth school vouchers have shown to save taxpayer dollars for all citizens according to Greg Foster a senior fellow with the Friedman Foundation for Educational Choice stated quote six empirical studies have examined school choices fiscal impact on taxpayers all six find that school choice forgives money for taxpayers the idea that our schools will lose money and taxpayers will suffer goes contrary to what empirical research has shown us lately lastly we must recognize Lakota's failures to provide for our children according to Ohio Department of Education only fifty-seven point five percent of Lakota students are deemed ready for future opportunities this is clearly unacceptable and it clearly shows Lakota's unwillingness to address this situation major situation in the hopes of helping our children if we as a community wish to see our children to be successful in academics we must commit to ourselves to notion of restoration by reformation of our education system with this I encourage and implore the Lakota School Board to embrace this bill in the hopes of a brighter future for our children thank you
thank you Mr. Oswald Mrs. Oswald is up Mr. Corbin will be next
Angela Oswald good evening tonight I'd like to address the ongoing curriculum CRT issue first and foremost students should be priority giving the school superintendent the sole responsibility of the curriculum hides and shields the responsibility from the directly elected board parents need to be able to hold the board accountable for the path of the curriculum the the community desires do we allow doctors to treat our kids or turn our retirement plan over to investors without any of our own personal input parents need to invest in their kids' education schools are becoming indoctrination centers Lakota needs to prepare our kids for life after school and not woke issues racial bias is being inserted into the curriculum without parents seeing the schoolwork being given to their kids the Ohio Department of Education has informed me that local schools are responsible for the curriculum taught to their children the average ACT score colleges look for is a twenty-seven Lakota East average score is twenty-four and Lakota West is twenty-one parents are waking up now and must monitor the curriculum we have at Lakota Schools employers do not let employees go rogue and do what they want teachers need to have guardrails and have proven unbiased non-woke materials that they can can be used I'm sorry materials that can be assessed and used for teaching January twenty-six twenty twenty-one Lakota School Board meeting fifty-three minutes into the meeting Elgin Card Executive Director of Equity Diversity and Inclusion Department for local for Lakota Schools stated he is a strong proponent of CRT and his three big issues he wanted to change were one curriculum two the hiring process and three policies for his words shading some kids but not others I'm not an attorney but there may be some legal issues concerning equal opportunity employment laws and Title VII discrimination Lakota needs to get back to the basics and remove all woke education thank you
thank you Mrs. Oswald Mr. Corbin is up Mr. McCall will follow
thank you I am David Corfman I wanted to speak to two issues for this board this evening first there have been some questions if people outside the district can address the board in this at this platform I don't want to beat this issue much further but I do want to point out that the Westchester Board of Trustees allows only Westchester residents business owners and property owners to speak at board meetings I would think that this board would want to be consistent with those guidelines a second issue is the practice of abstaining from a vote for example Mrs. Bodie Bodie abstained from a vote last week for reasons I don't accept again that's just an example uh but you were all
I'm going to ask that we not point out specific board members
okay pardon me for that example okay you were all elected to this board to make decisions not abstain uh when you don't feel informed or afraid to make a decision you vote and you own that vote other councils and boards have adopted a method that allows for and controls abstaining the board member would ask the board for permission to abstain and would offer their reason the board then votes to allow it or disallow it there are valid reasons to abstain and I appreciate that and the board can quickly decide on that so I strongly suggest that this board consider implementing such a rule and each of you was elected to this board to make decisions and if you don't care to vote you shouldn't be up here finally I support Matt Miller and Jenny Logan and administration I appreciate and applaud the board majority's comments this evening uh in their support of the two of them and the administration
thank you Mr. Corbin Mr. McCall is up Mr. Horton is following
good evening Benjamin McCall we are Lakota it's a phrase that is often cherished and touted uh yet I think we can also agree that there have been a lot of discussions conversations arguments agreements and disagreements over the past two years that have not always backed this sentiment up uh many of us have of these conversations have stemmed from these firm personal and political beliefs and while the personal beliefs can at times be challenging and divisive some of them some of them are needed in order for us all to hopefully understand and appreciate each other's views our view from our lens is always important to us yet we often lose sight and share our own views while becoming completely selfish and missing the views of others and often that is when our personal lens gets fogged up by our politics politics is natural but when we allow the politics to fall fog up our lens for our children then well we become partially blinded I believe this is this has blinded us from the fact that we have much uh we have much more needed things to discuss while we have not been shy about sharing our firm opinions and getting others to see our beliefs on masking health sports politics and the like let's not forget that our energy should be above all focused on our students our schools our staff our administration and our teachers and with that we should remind ourselves that we can be firm and fair without being destructive and divisive if we can all agree on these points then I think we all can agree that there is a place and a plan that we'll focus on on these things a plan that we can also move our dedication and focus forward for our students and our district that thing that plan in my opinion is the Lakota Master Plan and that is where we should focus our efforts if we can remind ourselves to focus our energies to fixate our sights and lens on that well imagine how much better we'll be able to see what is actually needed a final thought we talk a lot about the job of the board of the school district yet we often forget and at times dismiss the job of us as parents talking about others' jobs while easily forgetting our own our job as parents for students that will soon attend and take part in this district is to be an example is to clear their path of obstacles that them to focus on the sights of their future we need to ask ourselves what examples are we setting what obstacles are we creating that is Lakota we are Lakota right well maybe it's time that we all back
thank you Mr. McCall Mr. Horton is up Mr. Argo follows
hello Douglas Horton eight two zero seven Paddington Court Westchester Ohio four five zero six nine after the February fourteenth two thousand twelve twenty-two board meeting myself and also many other parents in Lakota have become alarmed by what we were observing on social media from a member of this board one member of this board took an email of concerns from a parent and and sent uh that was sent to her school board email address published that email on numerous Facebook groups and included her harsh response that said this parent's comments made them an arrogant sanctimonious bully while I support this member and holding whatever opinions she may have or has been told to have I was surprised that any Lakota School Board member would use a parent comment to insult that parent parent publicly even more disturbing was the use of that comment and her response to attempt to secure public or political support the parents I've talked to are concerned that this is an intent to intimidate parents from voicing their concerns to this board and who can blame them with examples like this should I as a parent of Lakota expect that any comment I make or email to to a board be distributed across social media and be and have my name called it with along with insults does this board expect open communication with the parents of this district if the concerns of the parents that they share are likely to be weaponized and thrown back at them during school board meetings in the media or on social media while I'm sure there's well obviously from tonight there's a lot of legal and transparency issues surrounding this particular example I believe it's important that the parents of this district know where each of you individually approach this issue and how each of you intend to engage with parents so instead of simply summarizing my comments at the end of public comment I invite all of you to use your public comment session to address how you would respond to parents and deal with their issues when they communicate them to you so please answer this simple question do you agree with using comments and concerns from Lakota parents against those parents on social media in the press at board meetings or other public forums any silence from you on this issue will speak volumes as to the type of conversations you want to have with the parents of this district thank you
thank you Mr. Horton Mr. Argo is up Mrs. Erdl follows
Alex Argo I just wanted to do a quick follow-up on a House Bill two ninety three-fifths of the board has previously made their own statements known uh in previous uh public comment response on what what their thoughts are on this bill and uh its previous comments today uh many in the community are are looking to the board to make a statement on what the board's position on this bill is I've been at this mic and asked for it at multiple board meetings I've sent in emails and I've not received a response and most recently the the answer was that the bill is too short to comment on one of the bill sponsors Representative McLean has stated that the purpose of the bill as it is now is not to lay out a specific plan but rather to spark conversations about universal vouchers in Ohio the the board all previously watched and saw an hour-long presentation on this bill so here I am again just wanting to have the board take a stance on this bill uh thank you for your time
Mrs. Erdl is up Mrs. Joe Johansson is following
good evening I'm Christy Erdl five one one three Princeton River Liberty Township um I just wanted to take a moment I know there's been a lot of discussion on curriculum and just wanted to voice my heart I know that I've brought a few items to your attention in in recent months and I just want to say as a parent um but that is never a tack personally on anyone in this room it's just me as a parent bringing information and concern so I will say you know I have gotten responses and I do appreciate that um so I just want to speak from a lot of parents that it's not a witch hunt it's not a you know a gotcha um it's just valid concern from a place of a parent and wanting to say hey I don't necessarily agree with this or help me understand um so I think that that voice needs to be heard it's not a political issue it's not a personal issue um it's just a concern as a parent so that's my first point um my second point I just want to mirror actually a lot of what Mr. McCall previously said um if we are Lakota I think we need to take that into consideration I think Mrs. O'Connor you opened up the meeting with um just good insight and reminding all of us and you on the board that we need to come from a place of respect and mutual honor for one another recently there's been a lot of discussion on social media chatter about a website Lakota Lowdown and I just want to voice my opinion as a parent I think it's really disappointing no matter what side of the spectrum you find yourself on I think we as a community need to do better um and I would just ask that the parent that created that I think it is very um just insulting of the position and the seats that you guys hold and I just wish that it would be taken down so public request to that individual that she removes that website because I think her community can do better than that so thank you
thank you Mrs. Earl Mrs. Johansson is up Mrs. Cameron follows
hi there I'm Jill Johnson and um first of all I want to say it's so exciting to see students here so thank you for coming that's awesome um and then I want to tell a couple of uh quick stories about my own students that are in the school district um some people have talked about about we are Lakota and so this is what we are Lakota means to me so my daughter's in junior high she's part of the drama club and she loves it um on the forum when she signed up the drama teacher told them to check yes for all the options main park course and crew because she really encourages the students to just go for everything um and it's her first year of junior high so this helps her have a feeling of belonging and the last school dance was even called we all belong it was organized by the student council and sources of strength and a portion of the proceeds were donated to Linder Center for Hope and she had a blast at the dance so that's one thing that we are Lakota what that means to me um every morning my son gets on the bus he goes to elementary school and his bus driver greets the students with a big smile um his two teachers have been a team for many years and they're incredibly dedicated at the beginning of the year they ask the parents to let them know when the kids have after-school activities so they can show up and cheer them on um every year he participates in the Lakota Optimist Clubs run for youth and they have a running club at his school the principal's out there running with the kids organizing it and the race is a celebration of all the runners and it makes me feel really proud to be part of the Lakota School District so for me this is what we are Lakota means and this is public education at its best so as parents as we're up here asking for your stance on something like the backpack bill HB twenty-two ninety we are asking that we can trust you to be public education advocates that's what we want we want to know that we can trust you because we are a public education school district um and so if past HB two ninety will fund not only those students who are attending public schools but also those who are accepted to attend private schools as well as Jenny mentioned that you know if you do the math it's a little hard to figure out how we can afford to adequately fund education across both public and private sectors um it's my feeling and a lot of people's feelings I've read a lot of op-eds about this that it will hurt public schools and it could affect Lakota and we just want to know that you have our backs and that you're public education advocates so that's why we're asking for your stance on it so thank you
thank you Mrs. Cameron is up KK Belloy is up next
Heather Cameron thank you for the opportunity to speak today as the parent of two Lakota elementary students I have major concerns regarding the suggestion that school board members should have the power to approve curriculum for the district the same members have suggested that there are two sides to evidence-based medicine and healthcare protocols the real kicker was a website entitled Catitude which was cited as research behind the reasoning to end healthcare protocols unfortunately these school board members don't judge research credibility based on sample sizes sponsorships randomized control status peer review specificity sensitivity or intrarater reliability numbers fortunately public health officials do use this data to validate the credibility of a study and that is why it is imperative that they guide these decisions for our school for those same reasons it is imperative that our district that our district continues to have professionals make decisions regarding curriculum the future of our students will be directly and negatively impacted if politically driven overtones guide this board instead of the district making decisions for the betterment of all Lakota students do we really want to invite this type of paradigm shift into our schools do we want to create a situation where non-educators make educational oversight decisions the parents and the students in this district deserve the best and power moves like these are far from it shout out to our educators and staff you all continue to amaze me Mr. Miller thank you for all that you do you continually exhibit patience empathy integrity and competence that this district needs and I'm sorry you didn't receive the apology you deserve at the beginning of this meeting that was disgraceful and embarrassing thank you
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron. Jenna Wells follows.
Good evening, everyone. My name is KK Beloy, and I am the current Black Student Union President for Lakota East. And I am also the president of the Women's Empowerment Club, as well as the Vice President of Student Government, as well as the Vice President for JSA. Not that that's all, either way. With the option of the new African-American history course, I had a question about how students are going to learn about African-American history without understanding the basic fundamentals of critical race theory, which is prohibited in the state of Ohio. The current education system limits the Black experience to the Black struggle by only educating students about the bad things that are associated with the Black community, such as slavery, Jim Crow, the civil rights movement, lynchings, and the KKK. Critical race theory allows students to learn more about the stories associated with African-American success. So though the topic is controversial, open dialogue in the classroom, including discussions on critical race theory, racism, and white supremacy implies a level of honesty. Students must be able to determine for themselves how they regard social and historical issues, and must therefore be armed with all necessary theoretical and political tools to do so. If educators and Americans truly want to move forward in a more equitable society, progress starts with an honest education about the history and experience of people of color in the United States. And in this manner, critical race theory, and in this manner, critical race theory and its tenants must be considered if we are going to consider African-American history as a course at the Lakota District. As a member of the Black community and our respective community leader, critical race theory is about creating honesty in the current systematic racial and socioeconomic inequalities that affect African-Americans and students of color. It should not be prohibited to serve as a racial blanket to shield students from the truth about American racial history. It is about teaching kids how to approach, respect, and have empathy for and have empathy for their fellow African-American students and their experiences. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beloy. It is great to see students here this evening. Mrs. Wells is up next, and Mrs. Brettestich will follow.
How can I follow that? That was pretty awesome. All right. Good evening. My name is Jenna Wells, and I'm one of the startup families for the Lakota Cares Support Group. Lakota Care stands for Champion Abilities, Relationships, Equities, and Strengths. I have had children in this district for over 12 years now. My husband and I have four boys in three different buildings this year. As a representative of Lakota Cares, I'm excited about partnering with the Lakota District. My son in fifth grade has Down Syndrome and various other diagnoses. He is on an IEP, and I'm incredibly thankful for a team that shows up and welcomes open communication. Our district representative that attends each meeting from central office listens to our concerns and works with us, with us, to follow our son's vision statement. The challenging part is communication with the greater Lakota District. We don't hear about the bigger picture within the Special Education Department. We don't hear we don't hear the expectations of the disability culture within Lakota. We don't hear all the good work that I'm sure is being accomplished. We don't hear about the special education budget or the collaborations happening with the state of Ohio, or the stats about how Lakota is meeting the needs of the students, which I'm sure they are. We also don't hear the challenges that the district faces within the Special Education Department. All of this information is so helpful for us families to feel as though we are partners with you. Believe me when I say transparency is key. I know that transparency means a lot to this board and to the administration. You speak, you all speak of this often, which is so refreshing to hear. We saw that stat tonight that 66% of surveyors feel communication is excellent or good within the district. It would be appreciated to hear more about the Special Education Department. A partnership is imperative for us to create a positive experience for us parents and caretakers, but more importantly, for our children. So my ask for you tonight is to review the communication paths within the Special Education Department. Lakota Cares is here to help to bridge some of the gaps. We are here to help the families be more informed and in turn create a transparency line of communication. As you know, caretakers are a part of the IEP team for our children. We would also like to be part of the Lakota District team. After all, we, with a capital W-E, are Lakota. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. I welcome any follow-up, and I'm happy to continue this conversation. Have a great evening. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. This is Brettestich.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kate Brettesteggi, like bread and spaghetti. My pronouns are she/her. I would first like to say an enormous thank you to Mr. Miller. Thank you for standing up for the integrity of our schools, our teachers, our staff, yourself. The idea that you have something to hide is frankly preposterous, outrageous, and utterly divisive when we should be focusing on a time of unity as we are Lakota or we are supposed to be. Our teachers have struggled very hard the last few years over some of the most difficult hurdles they have faced many in their entire careers. I have roughly 15 friends personally who teach at various schools across the state and the country. Every single one of them have nothing but the best intentions when educating your kids. They are kids, as they call them. They love these kids. They want the best for them, to protect them, to watch them grow, to watch them thrive. It is unconscionable to attack our superintendent, our teachers, our schools. They are truly superheroes. They do so much and receive so little thanks. The last thing that they need are unwarranted and unfounded accusations. I do appreciate most of the statements that were made at the beginning of this session in regards to that, so I will say it again. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, teachers. Thank you, administration. Thank you, staff. The other topic that I had wanted to address was the comments and topics that were brought up at the previous board meeting regarding the renewal of the Ohio High School Athletic Association membership. I find it appalling that there was basically an attack on students' gender identity and pronouns by dangling athletic scholarships, competitions, and basically the entire district's athletics over a personal or political agenda. It is abhorrent. I was under the impression that many on the board were in favor of a parent's choice, and how can that apply to masking in curriculums and not pronouns and gender identity? It's about respect. If you meet someone named Elizabeth and they tell you that I prefer to be called Liz, how is that any different? Respect the students and the parents enough to make those decisions? Gender identity and pronouns hurt no one and are not contagious, unlike COVID-19. How would statements like this be inclusive to all students? Students are paying attention. They're here tonight. They hear that they're being singled out and attacked. If you say you support all students, please let your actions and statements reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. I had someone ask why I record these and feed those back, and the purpose of that is so that each one of you knows that you're heard. If you're stating an opinion, you may not have more than a thank you for expressing your opinion, but your opinion's been heard, and that's the reason for it. So Mr. Oswald shared his opinion on a backpack bill, and then he feels Lakota needs to be far more competitive, and pointed out that our disabilities and minority may suffer because of not having the school choice option, and also talked about students being prepared for the future. Mrs. Oswald talked about the COT issue and racial bias, and talked about the fact that local schools are responsible for the curriculum that they're teaching. And she also cited our ACT numbers with both of our high schools. Matt, would you like to say anything about that?
Well, one of the differences in trying to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges is that we require all of our students to take the ACT. Most many schools do not require all students to take the ACT. Only ones that want to go to college or have an interest in taking the ACT. So our scores are going to look a little bit different. Typically, you see schools where the students are all required to take it be about 3% to 4% lower, or number lower. The N number would be lower when they're required to take it. And I think that kind of makes sense. The average in Ohio is 19.9 on the ACT. We're still above that, even though all of our kids have to take it. The number about 27 to get into college, I haven't heard that. I know that there are schools that take numbers in the teens to go to college. So, and many schools are getting away from the ACT. So I just want to clear that up, and I believe that's accurate.
And do you want to say anything about not future-ready?
That's one of our focuses and one of our tenants. So, you know, I think that sort of speaks for itself.
And you don't mean 3% to 4% higher? You mean 3-4 points?
Points, yeah. The N number. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corfman talked about what the Westchester Trustees do in terms of who they allow to speak at their meetings, and that perhaps we might want to follow that. He also discussed the extension from a vote and another organization's way of handling that extension. So, and he also expressed his support for Mr. Miller and Mrs. Logan. Thank you for that. Mr. McCall said we are Lakota. And I liked your comment, Mr. McCall, talking about limbs that are fogged up by politics. I think that's a a very astute observation to make at this times across many different levels. And he reminded us that there needs to be a focus on students, and are we being an obstacle and a good example, or are we trying to be partners? And thank you for those comments. Mr. Horton talked about social media and a concern with something that was posted on social media. And is this an attempt to intimidate parents? And again, asking for what parents would like to know, how each one of us will engage with them and what our intent is. And would the board like to comment on that? Please go ahead. You said sure, so you're up.
First sound, first one.
I know, right? Tag your it. Personally, when I communicate with the public, I would prefer to do it via email, via phone call, sit down and have coffee. I don't ever comment on social media, even though there's horrendous things being said about me personally. I just don't do it. I don't think it's appropriate. I don't think it's appropriate to take a conversation that you've had with a parent and post it on social media. I think that's between the board member and parent or the community member. That's my opinion.
Likewise, again, I engage many of the same ways that Kelly mentioned. I too don't comment on social media. I think it's very we have to be very cautious when we speak sometimes, and I try to give this disclaimer probably far too often, that I am speaking as Julie Schaefer, not as the board, unless it's a decision we've all deliberated on and spoken about. I think it can often be misconstrued if you write something on social media that it is the view of the board. Because again, most people, unlike those who are sitting in this audience, don't understand how the board works. They often think we're full-time employees and that each of us can speak for the others and for the entire group. So I think it's a power and a privilege that we have to be very careful in how we use and how we communicate. I too don't feel it's appropriate, even though when notes come to us, they do become public record. I do think that that can have the power of dissuading people from writing when depending upon people's reaction to that letter, they choose to send it out versus having it be a public records request. I think I covered all aspects. No comment.
Mr. Adin.
Yes, my comment is going to be that I want every parent and every student in our school district to have confidence in me and believe that whatever they share with me, whether it's in private or in a form of email or whatever, I'm going to make sure it is private. Because the goal is to ensure that they are heard and they are fully represented. I know in the past, I know I've worked with Mr. Miller on many issues. I never shared that on Facebook or anything. And I believe that if I keep that, everybody's going to have confidence in coming to me to share what their concern is. And I'm going to respect that. I'm going to make sure it's kept private.
Thank you, Mr. Adin. And as my fellow board members have said, I have spent the last 14 years engaged with the community. I'm out and about in many different roles in the community, have a chance to interact and hear what I think community is thinking. I think we all do that. I am more comfortable doing a phone call or, in fact, happy to sit down with anybody, like to have a cup of coffee and talk to me about what's on their mind. I don't post on social media and certainly try to be professional in my interactions. So I think that is a pretty clear explanation for where we all are in terms of how we want to be engaged with parents. Happy to have anybody reach out if you would like to do so. We'd love to hear from you. Mr. Argo talked about House Bill 290, looking to the board to make a statement on the bill. Since we all attended, I may not be able to read my handwriting on this one, Mr. Argo. That may be the problem. To take a stand on House Bill 290, the board has not had that discussion in a public forum, which means that we have not taken a formal stand on it. As I mentioned in a reply back to a parent, there are 19 lines of text. That's it. That's the only detail to the bill. The only action that's happened on the bill since May of 2021 is there has been one session of sponsored testimony. Nothing else has happened on the bill. We have encouraged you, actually, I'll let either Matt or Jenny talk about our legislative team. And that letter that we sent.
Mrs. Logan directed a letter on behalf of the board, I believe, to let Mrs. Gross, who's one of the cosponsors, know that we were getting questions and asked if she was going to host any forums out in her district about that, and I don't think she's responded yet.
So we've asked that she create an opportunity for her constituents to communicate with her directly about the bill that she's cosponsored. Did you have something else, Mrs. Logan?
Correct. No, unless the email has come in in the last few hours since we've been meeting, I have not seen a response to our request. And basically, exactly what Mr. Miller said, you know, during board meetings and via email, we've had several concerns, quite honestly. The only, we did have one person speaking out in support of it tonight, which was the first one that we've heard. But we did express that we have heard those concerns and that we wanted our representative, Jennifer Gross, to be able to have that one-on-one conversation with the folks so that they could express those concerns, but we have not heard back yet. So if we hear something, we will definitely let everyone know.
I had a question on the numbers that you gave us last time. How did you come to that conclusion that we would be spending an additional $1 billion, over $1 billion? What did you multiply?
So the information, and I can share it with you, there was a presentation that was put together. I don't remember which one of the trainings I went to, but one of the groups that we belong to, which is the Ohio Education Policy Institute, Dr. Howard Fleeter, he had a presentation which spoke to those numbers. And so what he did is he just took a look at the total number of students who are attending private school as well as the homeschool children in the state of Ohio currently, and then took an average of that cost and multiplied it out, and it was over $1 billion additional that it would cost. and multiplied it out, and it was over one billion dollars additional that it would cost the state of Ohio um for all of those students. So that came directly from Dr. Howard Fleeter, and I can share that presentation.
You may want to tell her, Mr. Fleeter or Dr. Fleeter's background.
Well, I don't know all of it, but um he, he is the expert in Ohio when you look at school funding. Um, the legislature constantly asks him to come forward and um present and testify and give um data as it relates to school funding. Um, but I can, I can share that presentation with you so that you can see the, the data that went into that. So that's where that came from.
So the data was not specific to Lakota, or it was, so that was not specific to Lakota?
That is correct. So that one billion dollars is the total amount, additional amount that would be, that the state of Ohio would be spending on vouchers.
So from my understanding, I want to clarify some of those numbers. From my understanding, um, we, how, if you can clarify for me, how much do we spend per student? How much, I mean, if you put a backpack on them? Is it around twelve to thirteen thousand dollars per student?
So the information that we have from the state of Ohio, and I can go into one of the most recent presentations I did, but it's over ten thousand dollars um that Lakota spends. That's what we spend per pupil.
Okay, so with the numbers that I have received, if we are spending five thousand five hundred dollars for um eighth grade and younger um in their backpack, this is what we would get um for them to go to another school. We would basically be making four thousand five hundred dollars off that student additionally, and we're not even educating that student. So five thousand five hundred dollars goes with them. But four thousand five hundred still stays with us and we gain that money.
This is, this is.
Go ahead. Right. So, well, and let me continue, sorry, but then, um, and then for ninth through twelfth grade, the backpack bill will give the parent seven thousand five hundred dollars to go to another school. But if it's approximately ten thousand dollars per student, we're still gaining money off of that student leaving. So it's, I mean, of course, it's going to balance out a little bit, but I feel like it's not equalling out to losing an additional billion dollars or whatever it would equal. We're still, we're losing. I mean, we're losing a student, which is not what we want. Right? Um, but I think it also goes back to um Mi- um Hunter's, Hunter's point that if we're losing students, then there's obviously some opportunities that we want to discuss, but that's a, a little off. But, but basically, we're still making money off that student.
This is, buddy, there are some assumptions in your numbers that Mrs. Logan could probably explain a little bit that'll make it.
Well, that was the numbers. Thank you. Um, and so and you made me lose, lose my train of thought. So sorry, go ahead.
So, first of all, the way that, first of all, I want to say publicly, I am against the backpack bill. If I have not stated that clearly enough, I want to say I'm against it.
Please, no applause.
I am.
No applause, thank you.
So the way that the funding works in the state of Ohio is it's a shared responsibility between the state and the local. And so that seventy five hundred dollars, that would be directly given to a parent to use towards the education of their students. So they could use it towards um tuition, towards resources that they would need. I believe in the substitute bill, it also talked about um a special education student. Let's say there are related services that that special education student um would need. That could be used towards it. But currently, for students who are going to private school, we're not receiving any state money for that. So locally, we receive money from all residents based on their tax bill. But from the state of Ohio, unless that child attends Lakota, we're not getting any of that money. So if, you know, so we're not really saving any money because we're not receiving it to begin with, I guess is what I'm saying, with the private school students um who are, are attending uh a school um outside of the district. And I believe, and I don't have the exact number, and um sometimes difficult to get, but I believe it's around two thousand students who are leaving us to go to private school. So we've got about seventeen thousand, but about two thousand do leave us to go to private.
So my question is, do you think that people will actually, will come to Lakota? Because we are one of the top seven school districts. So I know we're all thinking hypothetically here, but what about the surrounding school systems? How much will that fluctuate? I feel like we're discussing people leaving, but I feel like a lot of people are going to come to Lakota as well because of other surrounding school districts and their concern for their education and Lakota being one of the top seven. I feel like that's also a benefit that we're gaining. You know, potentially like Hamilton County, we're gaining students.
So I'll, I'll start and then I know you're, um, so we absolutely want to be a district of choice. And we believe that we are a district of choice. Um, as I stated, seventeen thousand do choose to come here and two thousand go elsewhere. Um, one of the issues that was brought up, and I did watch the um, the hearing where the sponsors were giving their, their testimony and presented the substitute bill. One of the questions that came up is capacity. So are private schools right now, what capacity do they have? Let's say another four thousand Lakota students wanted to leave and take advantage of a um, that seventy five hundred and go to a private school. Well, the private schools might not have the capacity to accept all those students. So are we then essentially giving seventy five hundred to parents who decided to do that? But there's not, if it's about giving kids a choice to go and have a better opportunity, but yet we're only giving it to the ones who are already there because they don't have capacity, then I think that's, that's a concern.
Well, and that, are we afraid that students are going to leave Lakota? With this bill?
There's so many things. No, I've been, I, I have um said even before this came out, I'm okay with school choice and options for families. If you think you can get a better education somewhere else, go. Um, I would never deprive that. And I'm, I'm a proponent of school choice up until a point. And this is my point. Um, also against backpack bill, but have been, but um it's detrimental to public education. We've been saying that all along. And so um we were talking about other kids coming here, they're going to have to move here. Another family are going to have to move here to come. And, and that's just.
They do.
They do.
With our policy.
With our backpack bill, you could go to school at another district and live. Sorry, can you hear me? With the backpack bill, you could actually live in Columbus. Not that anyone would want to do this, but you could live in Columbus and you could drive your child to our school every day or whatnot. So the backpack bill does not.
We, we don't have to take them. Take students, we don't have to take residents outside the district.
Right. But with the backpack bill, you can.
We don't, we don't have to take them. We get to, we don't have to take them outside the district, correct?
Uh, I would have a hard time approving that uh outside the, outside the boundaries of Westchester Liberty Township coming to Lakota. We don't do that now. And we're not going to do it as a money grab either.
Yeah, I, I'm unaware of the process, but from what I understood, you could live in, in, in the chart that I saw. And ma- maybe this is correct, but this is just what, what I was told. You can live, you know, in, on the east side of Ohio and go to school on the west side. That the money goes where the child goes to school.
So currently, we have that. If a district wanted to say that um they participate in open enrollment, which we do, um, you could take a student from anywhere in the state of Ohio. So that currently under open enrollment laws, you could do that. Um, but like Matt said, we're, we're already so maxed out that we have, we've not accepted.
We have a cap on our open enrollment.
Right, right. But currently with open enrollment, you, you could do that, and a district could do that.
But right now, our open enrollment numbers out equal those that are in. That's our goal.
But that's between public school and public school and not private to public.
Uh, can I ask a question, please?
Sorry, Mr. Adine. Go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. I can see that we are already discussing Bill the uh, Bill number two nine. Uh, what is the purpose of this discussion right now on the, on, on the board? Uh, because I know the bill is still in the house.
Mr. Adine, I think.
Even though it's not your time for that, but I'm going to say that. Really? Okay. Is it better now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can see we're going into detailed discussion about this bill. This bill is still in the house. And it has not gone through. It has not passed. We're already voicing our concern, whether for or against it. Or, and we're discussing it right now on the board. Is it to encourage the bill to pass or to discourage the bill to pass? Because I don't know what essence we're going into this discussion right now. I know the reason, what brought this up is because there was uh information that um, is going to be, uh, it, the way, the way, the bill was going to be discussed. And out of curiosity, it's good to get information. You want to know what the bill is all about. And some of us went there physically and ev- every one of us attended. Some did online and some of us went there physically. I expected uh the community to thank us for even being interested in knowing about the bill. Because nobody has said I am for the bill or I'm against the bill right now. I don't, I don't know if anybody did. But we already spent so much time on this. So I'm wondering, what is the purpose of this discussion right now on the bill?
I think that's a valid question, Mr. D. And if the, if the board is prepared, we'll move on. And set up a specific time in a meeting for the discussion. We'll move on with the rest of our public comment responses. Is that all right? Is that okay, Mr. D?
Yes, please.
Okay, probably so. Um, Mrs. Erdl made um some comments. I think she probably spoke on behalf of many parents that communication with the board is not intended to be a witch hunt or a gotcha, but intended to be a bringing forward information and concerns, and appreciate that. This is Jonan, Jo- I'm Jonason. If I'm mispronouncing it, I apologize. Uh, talked about we are Lakota and very positive experience for her kids with um junior high theater and a dance process and that she really appreciates those experiences for her children. And wants to know that we're all public education advocates and can we trust you? And I hope that some of her very frank discussion leads to that for you. Ma'am, and Mrs. Cameron talked about curriculum approval and healthcare protocols. What she saw is research inadequacies and talked about a paradigm shift and uh appreciate your, thank you to Mr. Miller for his service. KK, I will tell you that we were all sitting up here thinking, how does she do all those things and still study? That, that, that was frankly amazing. I'm really happy to have you guys here tonight. Thank you for doing that. You raised a, a point about CRT as a part of teaching African-American history and wondering how that's going to be taught if CRT is not included. I'm going to turn that question over to Mr. Miller.
So I'm, I'm not going to go down that path. I have a question. What grade are you in? Ah, okay. That, no, it was, it was refreshing to hear you, and you gave us some food for thought and for us how we're going to move forward. And so I appreciate having the student voice, which through this whole pandemic has been probably the, the uh, voice we've listened to the least, just because we haven't been able to break that bubble, so to speak, with getting into some of our schools. So um, I know that um we'll be in touch um in terms of some of the valid concerns that you, that you brought up. And um you give the, the voice um for the kids. And so I appreciate that. Sometimes we don't listen as much as we should do that.
So thank you for bringing those up, KK. Mrs. Wells spoke about Lakota Cares. I think you're one of the founding members of Lakota Cares. Um, I believe several of us actually pay attention to that and really appreciate that you've brought forward the need to be more inclusive in a broader sense and in our communication and in, and our um, what we talk about in terms of our special needs families and what those experiences are. So thank you for highlighting that for us and for the continuing work to help support special needs families. Did you want to say anything?
Just, uh, you, you brought a lot of good things to light in terms of um we have a lot of work to do in that area in terms of the, of, of the students represented by uh the families and cares. And so, um, but it was productive too in terms of um, these are the shortfalls or shortcomings. There were many of them, quite honestly. Um, but that you are willing to help um rectify those. So thank you.
Can I say something on that?
Just one moment, please. And also to let you know, Mr. Miller does plan to do an update at our March meeting on our special education. So that will be coming up. I think you'd requested that. That'll be coming up shortly. Mrs. Booty?
Um, the last school board meet, school board meeting, I spoke with some, someone who is from Lakota Cares organization. And they wanted to have a voice, and that is one of your concerns I hear as you want a voice. And at the District Parent Council meeting, there is a process to become familiar, familiarized with the organization, or is it formalized with the organization? Have you started that process?
It says not. You can't, it's not a Q and A right now.
Maybe, so that would be something that I would um maybe check into if you have not, but if you have, then that's great. And I think that would help give you a voice on the DPC, and you'll be able to express concerns and um praises as well.
And finally, Mrs. Brett, Brett Estegi. I've been saying it wrong for three meetings. I apologize. I'll probably do it wrong again next time, but just remind me, okay?
Express a lot of appreciation for our superintendent and unfortunate comments that were made. Appreciate that. Also reference the renewal of OHSSA. I know that we believe that to be really important for our students, and uh that's, that's all of the opportunities for competitive athletics. And certainly, we know that in our extracurriculars, our kids are learning off the field, sometimes more than they do even in a classroom. But um there's, there's wonderful leadership experiences there that's really important to continue. So thank you for those comments. Anything else, Mr. Lo- Mrs. Logan or Mr. Miller?
Not, not on the comments, no.
Okay. Board, with your indulgence, although it's not on the agenda, if we do a brief closing comment, is that all right?
I still had a comment on the comments. If I could go ahead, please. Um, so when we, when I hear we, uh, when I hear say, or hear people say we are Lakota, I think one thing that we need to remember is that, yes, we have our successes, but also we have failures. And I think in order for us to be successful, we have to see our failures and, and congratulate ourselves on failing, because that means that we're going to learn to be successful through those failures. For someone to be in a position or be in a job and not fail and to always be perfect, I don't feel that leaves room for growth. When you fail, I think there's a celebration there and to admit that we have areas of opportunity. And that is a good example to set for our children. I think we are Lakota is, is, yes, we have successes as Lakota School District, and there are many successes out there, but we also need to learn from our failures so we can be better. And I think that teaches our, teaches our students as well. That's a um I don't know what I'm trying to say here, but that's. That's a, I don't know what I'm trying to say here, but that's kind of like a model that we want to represent. So again, when we are Lakota, we need to also re- relevant or revel in our failures so that we know that we are going to be successful the next time and learn and, and be more knowledgeable going forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. So what I was asking, if you're comfortable with a short closing comment section, Mr. D?
He's asleep. Poor Isaac.
He is in a different time zone, so he, he may not, he may not still be with us at this point, but I'm.
It's three thirty AM where he's at.
It's three thirty AM, so he just took out a huge chunk of his, his sleeping time to be with us.
That's dedication.
I think we should make exception, allow some applause for Mr. He's at a serious rally. You're really impressed by that. We're going to do short closing comments here, if that's all right with you, and we'll start with Mrs. Bodie.
All right, so critical race theory. Critical race theory is a toxic philosophy that is poisoning and destroying the mind and souls of our children. Terms like diversity, inclusion, cultural responsiveness, equity, cultural awareness, as defined and used by the promoters of critical race theory, are all designed to replace concepts like personal responsibility, self-determination. Their teachings are designed to confuse and discredit rational thinking and to effectively question the concept of objective truth. The parents who seek CRT in the district take it very seriously, and so should we. The question of whether critical race theory does or does not exist in our district, or what, to what extent it does, deserves attention. I believe this board should commit to an honest and unambiguous effort to assess and evaluate this issue and to recognize the need to remove the administration from the process, but they should remain as uninvolved as possible, being accommodating but operating business as usual.